Yes, I'm here.
Oh, hey, Patrice, I am too. Is anybody else?
Well.
Hi, you guys. It looks like there's thirty-two participants, but I couldn't hear anything, so I was getting worried, like.
There's that. We got, no, we got three of us.
Hey, hello. This is Lena.
Hello, Lena.
Hey, Lena.
I'm here.
No, it was silent. So it was silent, and I was leaving a message, and I was concluding to infinity or beyond, and that's when I think I, you heard my voice, huh?
Almost think you have grandkids, Mr. Chair.
I was talking about us.
No, you knowing what infinity and beyond is.
Did you say something, Lena?
It's snowing in Tuba City. Yay!
Yeah, I have about four.
We can go skiing out here.
All right. I have about four inches here.
Yeah, I think we got about, well, let me see, maybe, yeah, about two, two inches, two and a half inches here.
Yeah, infinity and beyond.
Chairman Ryan, we are just waiting on Supervisor Bagay.
Okay, all right. Let's see, and are we starting at, I got confused, because I got a message that I'm starting in fifteen minutes, but I think, maybe I didn't look at my phone, that's all.
It's scheduled for one o'clock, Mr. Chair.
Okay, okay. So Jimmy, you're, you're going to grab it and explain, we don't have materials before us explain what you're laying out, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will offer an introduction, and then you all did receive the, an email, a PowerPoint by email, within the last about half an hour from the clerk, and I apologize for the tardiness of that. We will make sure that you get the material ahead of time, especially looking toward Tuesday's meeting.
Okay, there we go. There we go. Oh, good.
The team spent quite a bit of time today finalizing what you see before you. I know the numbers are changing on a regular basis, and I think that was part of the changes that were made today by the team as well.
Okay. Let's see. Oops. Reset. Hang on a second. Here we go. Okay. Let me do this. Do one thing. You know, we're just a minute or two longer, but in the meantime, I'm trying to, oh my gosh. There we go. Okay. Ta-da. Okay. So you're going to pull up the PowerPoint and walk through it, then?
So, yeah, Chair Ryan, I will turn the time after my introduction to interim HHS Director Kim Musselman, who will be driving the PowerPoint, and there'll be a, you'll see a team effort this afternoon of various team members that will be participating in this forty-five-slide PowerPoint.
Okay. Got it. Okay, so so Judy isn't on yet, right?
Not at this time, Supervisor.
Okay, at this point, though, we're, we're kind of getting into it. I think we can go ahead and proceed, and if necessary. Okay, and it looks like Lindsay's reaching out to Judy also. So we'll go ahead and have, we're, we're here to talk about COVID-19. We had a, you know, a really good meeting last time, you know, just to start to get our head around. We're moving into a new direction, and it begs for a different level of mobilization, and Jimmy's been working together with, with everybody to, to put this together today. You know, I can say on behalf of the board, we really look forward to the presentation. We will have certain decision points associated with today that Jimmy and the team will help outline, which is really important. I think each one of the board members have brought a different perspective, which has really been really good. And, and the big piece of it is, we know this is our number-one priority right now. Definitely want to see what there is today, see what our opportunities are. Please, you know, as the board, if you, you get to a point of you're not sure, you know, we'll see if we're going to manage time. We're going to have, we'll go with COVID for three hours, and then we'll have Eric for the last hour that we've been bumping for about the last three or four or five meetings. We're going to give Eric a little bit of chance, you know, and take care of Eric there. So, anyway, with that, I'll go ahead and kick it over to you, Jimmy, and please don't hesitate to, you know, if we need to get people included.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Ryan. And Supervisor Bagay has joined us by phone, so welcome Supervisor Bagay. We have the other four supervisors along with the county team here today. And Chair Ryan, I think that Peterson is hoping to, to speak this afternoon, because he even put a suit and tie on for you today, so.
Oh, it's not just in this picture, huh?
Different, different suit and different tie, but he looks sharp as, as always. And, and Vice Chair Fowler, it is, it is snowing nicely in Flagstaff, has been for several hours, so we hope that continues. I thanked EM Director Deason earlier today for ordering up the snow. I think it was part of one of his orders that he put in recently, so, Wes, thank you. Chair Ryan, I will start by saying, you know, I apologize for you all not having material prior to now. I will take responsibility for that. We had an early morning meeting this morning for an extended period of time, going through some things by the whole team, and again, just confirming numbers and things, but, you know, moving forward, the team is committing new material ahead of time, understanding there are conditions where, you know, life will still happen, but that is our intent and our commitment to you, so thank you for your flexibility today. You know, we are here today to, with the board, you know, to talk about a true team effort by our county family. And if I don't know if, if, if team, if you could start the presentation, I'd like to, to go with that first slide, if that's, if that's okay. And go on to the next one, if that's all right. Because this picture, and go ahead and put it in slideshow format, if you don't mind.
County Manager Jane and Erica, it wasn't slideshow, so.
Okay. All right, cool. Thank you. Sorry, Eric, I'm looking at the presentation on my screen behind the presentation. Forgive me, but thank you. So, you know, this picture serves as a reminder for me of, of who we are. We're an organization and a team of, of, of human beings, of people who are providing excellent service and having some fun along the way, enjoying the snow as, as these team members are doing out at Tut Hill. So the mail must go through, but our team is continuing to put needles in arms, so in all elements and climate conditions. And I think it's just a testament of, of the, of the team that we have, and they're continuing to, to rock it. Mr. Chair and, and members of the board, as, as the county manager, I am sharing a commitment with all of you to lead this team, working in partnership with other members of the leadership team and the board. We want to build off our successes and make sure we're all on the same page for this path forward to respond to an unprecedented event in unprecedented times. Supervisor Horstman reminds us that it's been, this is the largest event we will have seen in our lifetimes, but definitely the largest event we've seen since World War II, but hopefully in our lifetimes, hopefully we do not repeat this again, but we are committed to working together to make things happen. And, and just the picture for me, and, and thank you Sarah Schildecker and Kim Musselman and Eric and the team for working together for that and providing that. You know, it's events in times like, like we're in right now, where the county is, is stepping up. In this event, I would argue, as a local government manager, is really not about the federal or state governments. That it is the, it is the county governments largely across this state and this country who are providing the frontline services in response to this pandemic. We are reliant on our federal and state partners for, for vaccine, for resources, but it is our team on the ground, Mr. Chair and members of the board, getting the job done. And I will say that I'm proud to be part of this team, proud to be leading this team and working with our leadership and the board. You know, we have an opportunity this afternoon for the board to review, Chair Ryan, to your, your comment earlier, review and update from our team on our one-county response to this ongoing COVID pandemic. This is intended to engage various members of our team and our various experts. We all have roles in life, and so various folks are going to be stepping in today, again facilitated by, 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 by Kim Musselman to share, to share details. And one of the things that they're going to talk about is kind of where we were nearly one year ago, if you can believe that, and the current conditions and, and our path forward. You know, I was talking to my wife last night, and I had just talked to my mom on the phone, and I realized, I said, you know what, it has been one year since we've seen my parents. And I think we're not alone in the situation that many families across our county are in, but I'm also proud to be part of and excited to be part of a team that's stepping up to respond to, to get this vaccination out as quickly and responsibly as possible to help reunite friends, family, community. You know, public health response and emergencies are a key responsibility of counties. You know, and you know, Kim reminded us this morning that, that this is a, a county-wide response. This isn't about a certain area of our county. This is about, you know, having a plan that, that deliberately makes sure that we are serving residents throughout our vast county, and, and the team is going to share some, some details today, including kind of where we started, as I said, a year ago, to where we're at, where we're now. So in this effort, you know, as, as has been stated, I am assuming a more formal leadership role in the discussion, but working in partnership with our DCMs and our department leadership, and then working with, with the board. So our, we do, we do have meetings scheduled, actually, in the next two days, you know, with our leadership team to make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward, and that we have a plan, as we've committed to you all, to, regarding the future leadership structure that we will be presenting to you on January twenty-sixth. So, Mr. Chair, I want to say that we have an amazing team, and I look forward to working closer with them and with all of you to serve this mission. We all have various roles in this response. And some people are actually, you know, especially in the HHS space, Public Works and others, that are actually working outside of their normal day job to fulfill those roles that are needed for today. And we may have various roles, but it is one cause. You know, and moving forward, you know, myself and the leadership team are committed to working as one team, and including the connection with, and communication with the board, the organization, and the public that we serve, because after all, we are here to serve people and communities who rely on us every day, especially in a time like this, in a public health emergency. They are definitely relying on us. So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to do the second slide and then turn it over to, to Kim, but, you know, let's, let's celebrate some successes. You know, the team is doing, you know, an amazing job, and I use the word team pretty regularly, but this, what you see before you today is accomplished through, through a team effort. You know, it's, you know, when you look at the magnitude of what's going on right now, you hear the frustration of folks that want to get, want to get vaccinated, right? And, but, but I think it is important for us to, you know, keep in mind that, you know, Coquino County is currently, currently has the highest rate per capita vaccination of, per hundred thousand in the state. And we are striving to do better and making sure that we have the structure in place to put needles in arms, and the team is, is moving clearly in that direction, and you will see that, you will see that this afternoon. So there's some numbers here of, 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 you know, the total tests that have been done, or total, and then the vaccinations that have been done. And again, as Board Direction, and then the team will talk about this, but testing will continue with the exception of this Saturday, when it is officially moved to its new site at CCC Lone Pine, and we truly appreciate our partnership with CCC. They've been amazing partners who stepped up and said, we got this. We will, we will help you, because we understand there's a larger public need here, and I think that's something that we are hearing, and some of you have reminded us of, but we are hearing from community partners across Flagstaff, but across this county in helping to, to meet the need that we have. And again, you know, the bottom there talks about, you know, really a very successful response to date, but it is a team. So I, to Chair Ryan, I just briefly want to just specifically say, a team has leaders, and that includes interim HHS Director Musselman, Assistant Director and Deputy IC Mike Oxto be, and Assistant HHS Director Michelle Exlin, and the entire HHS team who are rocking it. EM Director Deason and the EM team working with DCMs Keen and Adriani, but with the help of so many departments, including Public Works and facilities and team members across our county. You know, I was talking to Eric a couple of days ago about the call center. I was reminded, that call center is staffed by county team members across, from across the organization. They may work in the Treasurer's Office, you know, for this shift, and then get on the phone to help people. An example for me, Chair Ryan, of truly a one-county response. So we start by, by celebrating some victories and some successes, but knowing there is a lot of work ahead of us to accomplish the mission. So, Chair Ryan, members of the board, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if there's not, I'll turn the time over to interim HHS Director Kim Musselman.
Okay, any questions? Okay, seeing no questions at this point. All right, Kim, welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Ryan, Vice Chair Fowler, and Supervisors. Happy to be here this afternoon. Thought that as we began today, that we would start with a little brief history, kind of where we have been over the course of what is now a year. So next slide, please. So this is just a quick little snapshot to hopefully give you all an overview with respect to where we have been and where we currently are. Certainly are, you all know that it was a year ago, January, when we had our first confirmed case of COVID-19 in Coquino County, and that's when the Incident Command Team was activated. In March is when the Board declared a state of emergency, and the EOC Emergency Operations Center was opened and drive-through testing began, and we were the first county to make that happen, and in conjunction with many of our partners to make that a possibility. We also opened our first-ever county isolation and quarantine hotel, our Tier One Alternative Care Site. We were the, the first, and quite frankly, the only county that stood up a Tier One operation, and then, of course, we transitioned to a reduced facility model with respect to our overall organization. In May, we went from having our drive-through testing to then also including some testing, state testing blitzes that we were holding on Saturdays. Our ongoing testing expanded as we started taking our testing remotely throughout the county at various locations, and the county as an organization had developed our re-entry plan. In July and August, we partnered with our Federal Health and Human Services Organization for a self-administered testing surge, which, you know, changed the type of testing that we were doing, our capacity at Fort Tut Hill, and even in Williams, we had, had a, a piece of that was stood up. We also submitted at that time for our CDC ELC funding requests, which then resulted in about $3 million coming in, in the form of grants to help us to continue to be able to fund the operations that we had implemented. In September, we opened the ASU saliva-based testing operation at Fort Tut Hill, and as you all know, that has continued through today, and we then also continued to partner with them, as well as all of our other partner organizations around the county to bring not only testing to remote locations on a, on a regular basis, so that we were traveling around the county at various locations, but also started partnering with ASU to bring saliva-based testing to those outlying communities as well, and that continues today. We received, as I mentioned before, those CDC ELC funding requests. They granted that, and it actually, I understated it a moment ago at $3.5 million. And then, of course, our isolation and quarantine hotel operation transitions to a partnership sheltering model with Flagstaff Shelter Services. Throughout October and December, that's when we started our vaccine planning, and to be ready to start receiving vaccines in late December, we also implemented the Bionex Now Distribution Plan that includes some rapid testing kits that, that the counties were asked to distribute out to. were asked to distribute out to appropriate medical providers to continue testing throughout the county. And we also continued applying and preparing for vaccine allocation. And here we are in January. We opened our Fort Tuthill vaccination operation on January 4th, using the mobile administrative units from the Sheriff's Department and now since added a mobile trailer from the Elections Department. And we opened up not only vaccine Phase 1A, but then Phase 1B, using our initial allocation to expedite our distribution. And in the meantime, are continuing to apply for additional resources for vaccination support. Certainly, over the course of this, you see up in the top there that, you know, staff that's specifically assigned to this incident back in March were 82. Now, we're currently sitting at 105. And then, of course, we had just break broke it out there in terms of Health and Human Services staff that were assigned at the beginning of from March totaling 57. And then, of course, where we're sitting now at 79 specific to HHS staff. Next slide, please. Just wanted to touch a little bit in terms of that transition and really make sure that the board is comfortable and aware of all of the things that, as we have has, as I indicated last week, and then also in the discussion today, that we the testing was really something that as we had started down this path, and even as we were applying for those CDC ELC grants, there was always the plan that we would be doing testing and that at the point in time when we were transitioning into vaccines, we wanted to have a a plan in place so that we could transition those responsibilities off of the county and in particular, HHS, so that we could move and focus on vaccinations. And so with that, you'll see this is just a little graphic, and IT has worked with us to help create some other options that we can will be adding to the website so folks can make sure that they are still aware where they can get testing. But all what this slide represents is the county mobile testing locations, the many places that we have taken our testing show on the road, if you will, Grand Canyon, Tucson, Fredonia, Page, Sedona, Blue Ridge and Mounds Park, and actually coming up, well, the Sedona one is one that's going to be happening here in the next, I believe, next week or so. Then, of course, our Fort Tuthill testing site, which has really been one of our largest hubs. And so just to add on to what Jimmy stated, I know the board is aware that we have engaged in discussions with CCC to step into this space and partner with ASU to continue the saliva-based testing. The plan actually is that that operation is going to move Friday, the 23rd, excuse me, the 22nd, that after the Friday's appointments are concluded, and that operation will be moved over to CCC. And the they will actually be stood back up to resume testing on Saturday. So testing is not even closing for a day. The only communication piece that will need to be addressed is folks who have signed up for their appointments on Saturday, the 23rd. They still have an appointment, but instead of going to Fort Tuthill, they're going to go to the Lone Tree Campus for Coquenino Community College. Our partners are committed to continuing our mobile testing events. Not only do they have many of those partners that are listed, their Canyonlands, Encompass, FMC, our North Country Healthcare, all of them are committed to continuing to test in our outlying areas throughout the county, not only on their regular daily basis where they have testing availability, but also planning to to continue some mobile events or some once a month events where they can have a full block of time. Again, with partners, ASU saliva-based testing continues to partner with North Country and more and more recently with Canyonlands as well. So those those testing opportunities are still going to be available to all of our county residents. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to move into what we're calling overall our mass mass vaccination mission. So this is kind of just a draft mission statement, if you will. Certainly, if the board has any input, we welcome that. But ultimately, this is about us safely and effectively vaccinating 120,000 Coquenino County residents as vaccine is made available by the federal and state governments by fully mobilizing county, state, federal, retail pharmacies, all of our healthcare partners, and other local resources to make this possible. So the, as was already mentioned earlier by Jimmy Jane, and and I know Supervisor Horstman has said this on a couple of occasions as well, just really that emphasis of the gravity and magnitude of what it means to vaccinate over 100, well, just over 120,000 residents here in Coquenino County. And that as a county, we can't do this alone, and our resources are not sufficient to accomplish a task. We need all of our partners to do that. And and the thing that is most vital is that not only do we need all of this assistance to do it, but we also have to recognize and help our residents understand that all components of everything that I'm going to go through today and that others are going to join in the conversation on are contingent upon vaccine availability. And that has been the key component to all of the planning around this, as well as the the key frustration, quite frankly, around all of this. And we know that there are some things that are being put into place as we transition into a new president and cabinet and all of those that are going to be making decisions, as well as just transition into the phase where vaccine production is continuing to increase. So certainly, all of those critical variables, vaccine availability, can't say it enough. And then also really looking at what is the county's ability and the volume that the county can administer, and what is the volume that our partners can administer? So in terms of the development of this goal, I wanted to kind of walk you through and share many different pieces with how we kind of envision giving the board some framework around what can be not only a realistic, but also a potential aspirational goal in terms of how we're going to get to that mission of vaccinating all 120,000 that have been identified. Of course, this is going to require leadership from all levels and a leadership structure that can deliver, of course, on the board's expectations and our goal, as Jimmy had discussed earlier. And then ultimately, implementation of of other critical processes to make sure that we're adapting as all of these different conditions and constraints come at us. So the entire team is developing data-driven strategies based on vaccine availability. Again, what I I'll probably say that a couple hundred times in the course of the afternoon, but really just acknowledging that that is, in fact, our primary challenge is that constraint around vaccine availability. And I just want to mention, I'm going to get into it a little bit further into the presentation, but we have been working diligently to put together some models so that as we better understand the vaccine pipeline and how it's planned to open up and the total number of doses and what is Arizona's share of those doses and how that equates down to Coquenino County level, that there is work being done, that we're refining some of those models. But I'm going to be sharing some of those potentials with you all here in a couple slides to come. So a key piece, we want to kind of just start off on, as I've mentioned, again, this is about vaccine availability. It's about capacity and us building that capacity, not only as a county organization proper, but also with all of our partners. And so key to that is really managing those public expectations. And that is where we absolutely need the support and the help of the board in being able to do that. I just wanted to outline here a few of the kind of external and internal factors that are externally controlled and that are controlled by the county. Because I think this is really an important part of our message to our residents. Again, as I said, that vaccine allocation, that we are not in control of that. That is externally controlled by our federal partners, certainly because they have to send it to the state, and then how the state allocates it to us. We also have externally controlled factors that many of you are aware we have been grappling with in the last couple of weeks, which is the prioritization of the populations, that that is actually done not only at the federal level, but then at the state level through the the State Vaccine Advisory Committee that has then come forward and and laid out what those priorities are for those populations. Absolutely, our volunteer National Guard availability. We don't control that, but we also know that we have a responsibility in how we access both of those components. Ultimately, also our Health and Human Service provision requirement with respect to clinical and to our clinic and the public health mandate. And so what I mean by this is that we still have at HHS service provision requirements and mandates, if you will, regarding how what what types of clients we need to still be continuing to serve on the public health realm while we're also doing this vaccination. And so the the acknowledgement of that we have to have staffing capacity to still perform those duties or have board direction to ultimately decide that we're not going to do those things, but understanding that there are other external controlled factors to that as far as our directives from the state and the federal government that funds many of those services. Certainly, the funding allocations, no FEMA reimbursement for vaccination to date. So one of the things we're here to talk to the board about is some additional fiscal needs that we have identified. And unless things change, we know that we're operating the vaccine deployment really solely based on existing resources, which, as I had indicated earlier, one of those grants that we had, ELC grants that we had received were was for testing and for vaccinations. And so we were utilizing that grant on the testing front. As we are transitioning out of that testing, we're going to be able to utilize some of that funding then to continue to fund where we are going with our vaccine operations. But as you all know, that is not going to fund everything. We also can't control the performance and the capacity of our vaccination partners. So this is key as we are onboarding all of them, and I'll be sharing a little bit more with you with respect to their capacity. We don't control that. We are at their we we are just in a position to to capture that and to report that. Also, we are not in control of the type of vaccine that we receive, as well as the subsequent requirements that go with when we get that vaccine regarding state allocation and that distribution model. Many of you have probably heard, there's other vaccines out there that are in various phases of approval. And so right now, we're dealing with two different types of vaccine. That could change in the very near future, which could ultimately require us to need to pivot in even what we are currently stating as a proposed plan. And lastly, on those externally controlled factors, the access to subgroups of vaccine recipients and general public response to vaccine availability. And certainly, this is something that we can influence, but that we do not ultimately control what those responses are going to be. But what do we control? We certainly control the prioritization of the strategic policy and how we decide we want to move forward with distribution. We certainly control the county staff allocation and the county resource allocation. And I say we, meaning obviously under the board's policy decisions and direction, the county has the ability to control those things. And then, of course, also Health and Human Services staff scheduling. So just giving a little more information around that partner-reported vaccination capacity, I think this is really key for all of you to to see, to understand where we are right now with it and the fact that it's going to be expanding quite significantly. So as you can see on here right now, our current capacity at Fort Tuthill is up to 200 vaccinations a day in our existing footprint, which later you're going to see what that looks like on a visual. But that is does have some fluctuation in that as we have added staff capacity and other things, but that's our current capacity. Our current partner capacity is is in the greater Flagstaff area, about 414 vaccinations a day. NAU is just getting rolling, and their capacity, as they have reported to us, is about 75 vaccinations a day. A little caveat to that, they are planning here at the end of the month, a couple, again, pending vaccine availability, a special two-day event for their the staff that are part of the NAU organization under that education and other under the 1B prioritization under education and staff associated, they plan to be able to vaccinate over a two-day event, 700 per day. The Page region is currently has the capacity of about 100 vaccinations per day, and the Grand Canyon Tucson area, about 30 vaccinations per day. Williams, just I'll just make a note here, North Country Healthcare Clinic in Williams, they had some COVID-related staffing shortages and some other staffing shortages. And so they haven't started vaccinating yet in the Williams area, but they will have capacity up there, likely about the same amount with respect to 30 vaccinations per day. So when you look over at that chart there on the right, this kind of just gives you those numbers of many of our other partners as well, other than the ones that I just outlined. And so you can see on that chart with our existing partners, as of right now today, there is a total current vaccine capacity per day of just under 800 vaccinations per day. It's calculated at 789 right now, that as long as vaccine is available combined, that's how many vaccines we're able to administer at this point in time pending vaccine availability. Certainly, there is expansion capacity and the additional capacity, obviously, the is variable pending the request confirmation and receipt of additional vaccine. And then ultimately, more providers continuing to be onboarded as those allocations become available. So what I mean by that is so on this chart, some of these folks, including the Canyonlands, Baraho Health, Northwoods, many of those are just coming online and starting to vaccinate this week because we were able to allocate them vaccine to fill appointments and start vaccinating. Other onboarded partners who have not yet requested vaccine, and I'm just going to read these off, there's about 15 new onboarded partners that are ready to schedule appointments. They are just waiting for vaccine allocation. And so we are waiting for more allocation that we can push to them. And this includes being able to vaccinate in our county detention facility, Safeway pharmacies all across the county. There's multiple Safeway pharmacies all around many of our communities and Flagstaff, including Page, Williams, and certainly Flagstaff and other locations. As I mentioned before, North Country Healthcare in Williams, the Mountain View Pediatrics, WL Gore and Associates, the NACA Family Health Center, Encompass Health Services up in the Page area, and that will potentially be able to help us with the Fredonia area, Genoa Healthcare, and Northern Arizona Orthopedics Flagstaff Clinic. So we have multiple Safeways that are ready, the Guidance Center as well, and actually almost left them off. So I just want there to be that understanding that we've got partners that are already to start vaccinating, they're just waiting for that vaccine. We also have Concentra Flagstaff, our fries store is onboarded and ready to receive Flagstaff Pediatric Care, Tubic City Dialysis Center. So there's a lot of places that are ready and poised to also participate with us to make sure that we can be distributing this vaccine across our county. So this is what I had referred to a little bit earlier when we were talking about using those models that we're putting together and developing to be able to continue to give the board a good picture of of what the different kinds of scenarios could be. And so as you look at this, as as we are developing these data-driven strategies, again, based on vaccine availability, we're utilizing existing CDC tools and partners and partners availability for these draft projections. So the below projections that I'm going to share with you incorporate a continued community or continued community response efforts. So for Coconino County to reach 100% resident vaccination, Coconino County would need to have 1,600 vaccine doses available daily, which outpaces the realistic vaccine availability predictions. So I just want to state that so that we can then talk through what these predictions are. And this is even as we move into what is the Biden administration plan to infuse 100 million doses in 100 days. So on that far left column of the PowerPoint, you'll see that if, so with that 100 million in 100 days, that equates to 400, with with the percentage of our our allocation that we would get based off of the models of how we've been receiving allocation, that would be 465 vaccines available daily. That would vaccinate 19% of our Coconino population by June 1st. And to accomplish that, if that is the the rate in which we start to receive vaccine, we are already ahead of that game, if you will, with respect to our partner availability and what we currently are able to provide. So just want to restate that that is, you know, that 465, but that that would then only vaccinate 19% of our county population by that June first date. So next scenario, let's make an assumption that that in that the vaccine allocation is actually increased to 300 million in rapid availability. So that as we roll into the next few weeks, that it goes not only from this 100 million in 100 days, but 300 million, basically applying the fact that there's 300, over 300 million population in the United States. And so that if production is there, that those would be infused into our communities and our production or, excuse me, our allocation line over the next 100 days. If that is the case, then we would have 929 vaccines available daily. And that would mean that we would be able to vaccinate 58% of our Coconino population by August 1st. And that, what that, what that looks like for the county is that that's going to, in order to meet that, and especially as we go further into the the next coming weeks, that would require additional partners being onboarded and and also having ability to vaccinate as well as the readiness of one of the BaseX operations. And I know the board has has some awareness of the BaseX operations. Wes Deason is going to be going into much more detail about that a little bit further along. But just to 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 bring this into context, there has been a request for two BaseX operations. We'll be explaining more what that means with respect to increased capacity to vaccinate. But just in terms of this model, wanting to show that if if we were to get 300 million rapidly infused over the next 100-plus days or so, that that we would need to be in the, in, ready to operate and start the readiness of of one of the BaseX operations. So with respect to an aspirational vaccine allocation, let's make an assumption that 660 million were rapidly available. That's, you know, just a little over double on that middle column. That would mean we would need to be able to receive and also provide 1,600 vaccines daily. That would allow us to vaccinate 100% of the Coconino population by August 1st. And if if that vaccine allocation were to be available, what we would be needing at that point is 40 additional staff and volunteers daily and both of the BaseX operations that we have requested would need to be utilized and put into play. So and and I'm going to pause here for questions, but just wanted to point out that that last little bar across the bottom of the slide there specifically with indicating that, you know, ADHS and CDC are, as you have seen on our, what we put on the website as well, they're projecting, you know, Phase 1A, B, and C, which is what we reflect on our website as well, taking through the spring to accomplish that based on current allocation. And then also late, then of course, moving late spring into early summer to begin that Phase 2 group of vaccinations. So with that, Chair, I'm going to pause for a minute because I know that was a lot and want to be able to make sure that there's an opportunity for folks to ask questions and to
Okay, questions out there.
Process that.
I see Lena popping up. You're you're on mute, Lena.
Hi, thank you. I do have a question. The these partners, they are all, sounds like they're all getting their vaccines allocated from the county. So that would be my first question, where are they, are we the the source of all the vaccines to throughout Coconino County? Of course, not on tribal lands, but the throughout the the county other partners. And then the second question is that are we only providing vaccine shots to only the county residents? Because with the testing, we've been just getting anybody that comes through. So how to, how does that work? Because your presentations are all based on county population. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Fowler, Chair Ryan. And I, so to answer your first question, Supervisor, with respect to the allocation, yes, right now, all of our partners are getting their allocation directly from the county. The way that the the plan is set up, all the vaccine flows to the state, who then allocates each county's percentage to the local health department authority to allocate out. So that is our charge right now. We are required to be doing that, and that is the only way that vaccine is being distributed outside of, and there's a couple of caveats to that that I want to make sure are clear as well. Some of these pharmacy programs, specifically the pharmacy programs that are vaccinating our long-term care facilities and assisted living facilities and group homes, that allocation is going to the CVS and Walgreens Pharmacy directly from the state. So the state is allocating to them. As these other federal pharmacy partners come onboard, we are told that the state will then be allocating to them as well. But all of the other partners, and even right now, with respect to those safeways that I mentioned that are ready, that are already onboarded, it is very likely that we're going to have the opportunity to actually use some of our allocation to allocate to them so that they can get started. But we do understand that there's going to be other state direct allocations going to those, to most of those pharmacy partners. But all of those other partners, those healthcare providers and others, that allocation is coming from us based off of what they request as well as what their capacity is for administering. And then, of course, vaccine availability. And I'm sorry, Vice Chair, your second question lost, I got, I lost it.
Are we vaccinating county residents?
Oh, thank you, thank you, Eric. So yes, Supervisor, we are, it is absolutely, what, how we have it set up is we want to only be vaccinating county residents because of what you just mentioned, that our allocations are based off of our population. We have, just so you're aware, because of where our county is located and many other counties have the same situation. When we have folks, especially in our Phase 1A groups, if they were working in Coconino County, that is their place of work. And and they were working at, you know, let's, let's use Page Banner as an example. They, they were working at Page Banner Hospital, but they may actually live in Big, in Bigwater, that's in Utah. They were allowed to get their vaccine in Coconino County. So there is some overlap there, but it is designed that we're trying to keep at the county levels, we're trying to keep that to county residents only. And what you do know is that down at the State Farm Stadium and what's going to be the Phoenix Stadium, that that has been opened up statewide. So you don't have to be a resident of Maricopa County to access those two particular sites.
Done Supervisor Fowler, yeah, okay, others? Okay, I'm not seeing any, just a, I have one, one question, Supervisor Horseman.
Thanks Chairman Ryan. And first of all, Kim, I want you to to know, HHS and you, you guys are rocking this and I so appreciate it. I know this is a massive effort and I know that not only myself, our whole county appreciates this. So first of all, thank you. Chairman Fowler asked a lot of the questions I was going to, but I have one additional one. And that is FMC, have they agreed to do more than 1A? Will they be a partner for 1B and hopefully 1C here when we get down there for that? And the same with the other partners.
Thank you, thank you Supervisor Horseman, Chair Ryan. I, yes, so in fact, I was actually having multiple email exchanges with FMC both yesterday and today. They are looking for another location to stand up a community clinic so that they will be vaccinated. And they've asked if we can, they asked if we can give them 1,500 vaccinations per week right now, that's what they're looking at their capacity to be able to do. And I responded and said, we'll give you all the doses. You can manage to schedule and administer to our county residents as long as we have the vaccine allocation to go with it. So they absolutely are in engaged in that phases. And just so you're aware, they also did and vaccinate outside of just their 1A employees only. Last week, they were vaccinating our law enforcement partners in 1B priority. So they were already doing that and they're, they are absolutely engaged in finding a location that that better suits the operation. And again, had just asked for up to 1,500, wanting to be able to do 1,500 a week. And I'm hoping that that will increase depending on what all they're able to get.
Thank you, and one other question, and that is, and by the way, I totally understand switching testing to CCC. I think it's wonderful to have CCC as our partner. And how are we getting the word out and how can we help get the word out something else too? So.
Thank you Supervisor Horseman. And actually, that's, that's ultimately going to be a pretty good segue here in just a moment with respect to bringing Eric on in a little bit here to talk about the communications plan. But right now, certainly with just that one piece about the CCC change, I know the the joint information folks are already working on the messaging so that we can get it out to those that have appointments on Saturday in particular, because that's when this is really going to affect initially, that they are going to be going to a new location and then, of course, communicating to everyone that that is going to be the permanent location there. And in addition, we're continuing to message that, you know, NAU does have their testing site is open at the Fieldhouse. And they are processing over 600 appointments a day as well. And that's not only their, the random testing and the requirements of of students returning to be tested, but that's also open to the community. And that allows for people to not have to go to a drive-through venue as well, because they do, theirs is a walk-in and accessible by bus and other ways to access their testing at any.
Thank you.
Okay, Lucinda had a comment.
Yeah.
Lucinda.
Thank you, Chairman Ryan, and thank you, Kim. I I just wanted to share with the board that Esler Musta is his, is working on a modeling simulation tool that is going to just be really amazing for helping us. This some, this data really comes from mostly from this tool. And it'll be really supportive of, you know, being able to make strong decisions, both at the strategic policy level as well as at the operational level. And we weren't quite ready to give you a glimpse of that today, but we will at the next meeting. Because I think this will really go a long ways for you, understanding the whole picture and how it relates to resource decisions which are, which are coming very soon. So I really want to thank Esler for his efforts on this. It's, it's, you'll, you'll be very pleased with it, I'm sure. Thank you.
Yes, and thanks, Lucinda, for saying that. And and we had been meeting with Esler pretty extensively here in the last few hours. And and really, as we laid out this piece here, wanted to make sure that we have all of that data completely vetted so that when we share that with you, we are confident in it. But yeah, the tool that's been put together is going to be incredible and incredibly valuable. And just to to echo that we're, we clearly are developing this so that we can use, you know, data to to show you all as well as the community what that means. And and with that tied to this, that's, that's why we laid out these three kind of scenarios, if you will, based off what we know. Because ultimately, what, what I hope the takeaway from this is, is that unless the vaccine exponentially, as you can see on here, you know, 100 million to 300 to 660 increases in availability, we can't vaccinate any sooner than those target dates or even later, depending on, you know, how it all comes together. So that's, that's one of the key takeaways I hope you're able to see. And then again, this has got to be those takeaways as we start talking about how you help share that with our constituents, what those takeaways are and 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 setting up realistic expectations for folks as to when they can receive vaccine.
Yeah, key pieces of the discussion. So just the modeling is associated with the this population variability and vaccination, you know, distribution, is, is that what it is or it's beyond that? You're saying modeling, but and we're hitting on these different elements here, but is that what you're talking about?
Sure, I, I would, if Esler's on, maybe just briefly, Esler, talk a little bit about what you've done. He's already also literally gone in and read the contracts between the federal government and the vaccine suppliers. So, I mean, he's really dug into this in the last less than 72 hours. And it's, it's, it's pretty interesting, the data he's gotten and how that's going to help support us going forward. Very excited about this tool. So Esler?
So and and, you know, let me just pause for a second before Esler gets up. Will that fit into, how are we doing time-wise? Because you guys laid this out on that, does it fit into this piece right now? Actually, let's, let's take Supervisor Bagay's question and comments, because she's, looks like she'll, yeah, that'll help for her.
And then Matt, after that, I have some questions as well. This is Liz.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, or good afternoon. It's snowing out here in Comai. Just sitting on top of a vehicle, I'm on top of a hill with a vehicle running and stuff like that, but I managed to get through that way. But anyway, my, I was going to ask, is there any talks or anything being done with people that live in the remote, remote areas? I believe their coordination is happening with like Tubi City, Regional Health. And I'm not sure, I know some people out there, they don't have rides and grandparents are there, they're not getting any visitors. And and they can't get out and about now that the the weather's getting wet out there, stuff like that. I'm not sure if they're going to even make it out to where, to the road just to get shots. And a lot of times, people are pretty much in wheelchairs, they're wheelchair bound and things like that. So I'm kind of thinking for those people and I want to know if there's any talks about that. And so I just wanted to ask that question. I did get my COVID testing this morning at 8:00 and I'm, it didn't even hurt. Anyway, I just wanted to ask that question is, you know, how do we go to the remote areas? I know about three families are in that situation right now and they just can't come and as you know, the reservation is really wide and there, there's families that live here and then another two, three miles apart and things like that. But, you know, we have elderly and they're, they're told not to go anywhere, they're afraid to go anywhere. And yet they still want to get vaccinated. So that's one thing that I had a question on.
All right, go ahead, Kim.
Thank you Supervisor Bagay. So there, there's a couple of different pieces to my res- Thank you Supervisor Bagay. So there, there's a couple of different pieces to my response to that. If you're talking about folks who are living on the Navajo Nation or, or Hopi or any of our other tribal nations, those vaccination plans and responses are specifically coming out of, in this situation, the Navajo Nation. And I do know in what I have heard that there are some specific plans that have, I think, already started. And actually Supervisor, or excuse me, Vice Chair Fowler may even be able to speak to this better than I can, but that have already been planned and things that are specifically targeting many of those elder populations to make sure that those that are homebound and others have access to the vaccine. With respect to the rest of the county that falls under our obligation and purview is, that is one of the things that we're going to be diligently working with our partners. Certainly right now, we are planning, in early planning phases of developing some other specific vaccination clinics that are going to be held elsewhere, outside of Fort Tuthill, even potentially our other vaccination partner locations. You know, for example, like senior centers and other things. And we're going to actually be discussing those as well with some of our other outlying areas, including Page and Williams with, in partnership with North Country to be able to put some of those types of things in place that we can be able to create better access so that some of those folks that are homebound and, and also partnering with their doctors and the places where they go routinely anyway to receive some medical care, even though they may be homebound. They still have some regular appointments with medical providers so that we can make sure that we're communicating and working with our partners to make sure that the vaccine might be available when they come into their doctor's appointment, for example. So hopefully that gives you some answer. I don't have specifics about that yet. And, you know, hope to soon here in the next couple of weeks as we have lots of things in play right now that are just not fully vetted in terms of giving details. But those are absolutely being worked on and put, to be able to put into play.
Okay, um, the other thing is, you know, I'm, I, I, Coconino County still encompasses the Hopis and the Navajos. There's got to be I mean, there's probably partnerships, yeah, but I think, you know, we're, COVID doesn't say, you know, it's the Navajo Reservation or the, you know, whatever. And I think we really, really need to work hand in hand with this whole thing. And because Coconino County does encompass north all the way down to south and east and west of the whole county. And so I'm just thinking, you know, for the people that can't get around. I know for one, there's a grandma that can't even get in and out of her vehicle. She has to go to a hospital, ambulance has to pick her up and things like that are happening on the reservation. And it just seems to me that, you know, and what I've been hearing is, yeah, Navajo is doing their own thing and county's doing their own thing or Hopi's doing their own thing. And it shouldn't be. I mean, we, we've got to help one another. We have to help one another somehow. And, you know, it just, it, it just, it just kind of bothers me. But anyway, I just wanted to, I, I understand what you're saying, but trying to explain it to other people, they think in those terms and they say county is a county. Your mission says you're going to serve the whole county of, of the whole county. And, you know, things like that. And they're, those are being brought to our attention, my intention already. So, but I just wanted to, like, give you a little bit of feedback on that. But I'd probably just have to work, work more closely with maybe the regional health. And I know Lena Supervisor Fowler said, you know, it's, it's, they're already doing things. But I guess I know what they're doing, but it's just beyond that, you know, what do they do with homebound people? You know, things like that. That's the only thing that I, that I, I just wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Bagay. And if I could just follow by, by explaining that, if there are those folks who are homebound and other, that the, the Navajo Nation in particular, the model is that you need to go to the nearby hospital. That is where the hub is with respect to vaccination and that they can call, that you, you should be communicating with folks that they need to call their doctor or are at their nearest hospital to get that information and to let them know that they're going to need some special assistance with getting a vaccination. So hopefully that helps a little. And, and absolutely, we continue our conversations. Mike sits on a meeting. I want to say it's, it's at least bi-weekly, I believe, with the partner entities on the Navajo, actually all of the regional counties as well sit on, on a, on a meeting where they are discussing what is going on. Really, the counties are just there listening, but also understanding what it is that those independent sovereign nations are putting into place in their communities. And we're here to support that and to act, and to absolutely help communicate that message. And hopefully you saw in this last week's information and online and other things that we were advertising and communicating the, the vaccine clinics and blitzes that were taking place this past weekend for vaccination for Navajo Nation in particular.
Yeah, actually, sometimes we try and fill the gap of, you know, we just get into distributions or affected in a certain way and some we can control and some we can't. The question is, how do we communicate with each other so that we can help convey it out to community members? And sometimes supps fill that gap, supervisors do. But, you know, other times, it's a question of, you know, can we check in with our, our health department? Do they have additional information that we can help get to folks? And as, as Kim's noting, there's a regular meeting with the, the county and the healthcare providers out there on that. Just double checking, any, any more questions Supervisor Bagay? We're going to pick up Supervisor Archuleta afterwards and then we probably need to move on just in terms of timing of the presentation.
No, thank, no, thank you.
Okay, all right, Supervisor Archuleta, Liz?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Also, I first just want to convey my appreciation to all of the team members that have been working so hard since January. This is an anniversary month for us going on a year here or have completed a year. And it's hard to believe that we've been at this for a year. Certainly, there's been a lot of effort, I'm sure, a lot of exhaustion, a lot of figuring out ways to recharge. And everybody's been very focused on the mission. And that's, I mean, that's, that's incredible to think that for a year we've been, we've been doing this and that we still have, you know, this major mission ahead of us. And so I just want to thank everyone for their continued energy and their extreme commitment to public service. It's, it's something that I think we really won't, we know the immediate impact of that in terms of saving lives. But I think history will really reveal just the impact that every single one of our county team members that have been working on this, whether directly or indirectly supporting, that we won't really know the, the full impact until we see what, what history shows us. But I can tell you it's going to be great. And so what I, what I really, I really appreciate the, the presentation and what I'm trying to grasp is the, the, the numbers in terms of capacity. And so I know that we have, if I look at the chart on capacity and look at the seven hundred and eighty-nine, which is the estimated capacity. And then we look at the next page that shows vaccine allocation and looking at capacity. There, what we would, based on availability, what we could give shots, how many we could give. Tell me a little bit about what the projections are, like if we could, if we had the vaccines available and if we're, and if the partners that were approaching had increased capacity. Do we have, do we have something like that? Do we have that, that modeling? Or maybe I'm not reading these three charts and I need some help just understanding them. Because it looks like if we had all of the vaccines, if we had sixteen hundred vaccines available daily, which of course is very, you know, aggressive and is aspirational. It looks like then if I'm, we would complete everybody being vaccinated August first. But I don't know, like, based on what capacity that is. So that's where I'm, I'm, I'm missing, like, the, that information or I'm not digesting it correctly.
Esler can actually answer that specifically. Esler?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Archuleta, I can, I can kind of talk just in kind of general terms about, there, there are two inputs to this model that we were building. One is the number of vaccines coming in and the other one is the, like, the percentage allocation between the county as a, as a institution, like giving, vaccinating and then the partners. Those are like the two kind of like variables that play a role into the capacity that each of us as a, as a, as a group, like the partners and the county would have to bring up. So that sixteen, like if the vaccine, the supply of vaccines was not an issue, the county as a, as a geographic area would have to back, like, provide vaccines and have that capacity to vaccinate about sixteen hundred people every day all the way through August first. And there's two doses that go along with that. So that's the capacity. Now the county is a.
Can I stop you just for a really, can I stop you just for a sec there? Just for a sec, because I want to, I want to go on that for a minute. So then, of course, in terms of like talking to our partners, do we know like what their ultimate capacity is or what their expansion, what their availability for expansion is?
Thank you Supervisor Archuleta and Chair Ryan. I, what, right now, given the numbers, when we ask them, you know, what is your ability? How many appointments can you do per day? Right now, what they have given us is, is what their existing staffing models allow them to do. So, so pretty much, they don't necessarily have, it doesn't mean that they can't. And some of them, hopefully, as I'd mentioned earlier about FMC and others, maybe others can increase that. But right now, those numbers that were provided on that previous chart, and then we actually have that for all of those others that I just named. That's one of the things that we asked them in their survey as they were onboarding. How many appointments daily do you have, can you help accommodate us with? And so this is, this is making a, these models are making an assumption that sixteen hundred vaccines daily, that's the most we could do just because that's all the vaccine we could possibly have, even in the aspirational number. That six hundred and sixty million are proportion of that. And so that sixteen hundred vaccines daily, that may not have to be done. That may be done, we may be, as, as indicated at the bottom there, utilizing both of these two basics operations and all of our partners at max capacity. It likely would not even necessarily be that if all of our partners, especially as we bring on the pharmacies and others, have additional capacity. We would actually have more places and people to, available to give vaccine, but we're capped by that sixteen hundred a day in that total number. Does that, does that make sense? Does that help? A little bit? Oh, you're on, you're on mute Supervisor.
He turned her photo off, but you're still on mute. Where'd you go Liz?
You lose her?
It looks like it for a moment. You know, actually, you know, I'm, I was beating around, that around in my head. And, and I understand you have a model that's going to put variables in there. And, you know, I think we're, a piece of what Liz was asking, she probably has it a little bit different than what I'm thinking is. You know, we know we can produce, have the capability of doing seven hundred and eighty or so vaccinations per day. But there's a, going to be a different flow and what are the, how is it affected by the partners? So we'll have additional variables that, that speak to the delivery capability of a particular day. And, and that plays into the broader model of how many we can do to achieve our goals.
Yeah, thank you Chair. And I know if Supervisor Archuleta makes it back, just, yeah, just to be clear, like the, the, our partner's capacity is really a moving number. I mean, a, a moving target, if you will, based on, you know, every week it, it changes because we bring on other partners. And they also decide how much more efficient they can become, right? And also plan for, you know, are they going to do Saturdays? Are they going to add other days? Those kinds of things.
Go ahead Supervisor Fowler. Let me just do a little business real quick in terms of timekeeping. And I want us to get information, but, but also we're fourteen pages into forty-five in the presentation. So we'll go to Supervisor Fowler. If we get Supervisor Archuleta back, we'll try and answer, see if we can capture her questions if we missed them. But, but I do want to try and move us on also. And, and we can pause in the end and say, okay, we need to go further, make sure people are getting their information. That's the big thing about this workshop here. Go ahead Lena.
So the partners, we've been getting phone calls on their websites, not, not working or not knowing where to call. Since we have so many partners, how do people know who to call? And are they all free vaccines? And how, how, how is it that they can call? And then the other website registration and also their phone calls? Do they call them individually or do they just call our county call center and then we refer them? How does that work? The process of how people know where to get their shots? And then one, and one more thing. And are we all at the same level? If we're saying that it, we're at A1B, are all the partners at A1B? Or are some of them at A, A1C or another category? Are we all at the same, at the same place at the same time? Thank you.
Thank you Chair Ryan, Vice Chair Fowler. So with respect to all of our partner organizations, yes, each of them have their own scheduling systems and appointment booking. And so one of the things that we are continuing to put together is having those links to those organizations on our county website so that folks can still come to the county as pretty much that main hub for their, their information about where to go. But unfortunately, one of the things that we have no control over, kind of back to those, those, what do we have control over and what do we don't? Is any of the issues that may be happening with respect to their websites or, or if people aren't answering their calls. But we will, we continue to make a very diligent effort of as they give us that information. That's one of the things that we ask of them as they onboard. How do people connect so that they can schedule appointments? And we're going to continually be updating that on our website. And certainly, our call center will have that information as well. So that if people are struggling and they call and say, I'm trying to get an appointment in, you know, in Page, for example, where can I go? Our call center staff will have that information to be able to say, oh, contact Canyonlands or, you know, Page Banner. And here's their phone numbers, here's their websites, so that we can help share that information with anyone who may have any difficulty accessing it. And then to your question about the prioritizations, right now, we are asking all of our partners to stay on the same prioritizations as we are. Ultimately, that could change. And this is some of those things that are going to continue to change over time. And I say that because there are going to be communities that are going to be able to get through their existing priority areas much quicker than others based on sheer population. And so those will be things that we're going to work with our partners on right now, be, in these early phases. Why we have such limited vaccine and such a large pool of those who are eligible, even in our limited priority groups, we are asking all of our partners not to be, to move on. But we will be assessing that on a day-to-day and week-to-week basis with respect to vaccine availability and then their appointment availability. If we can, you know, provide additional vaccine and have others move on, that, that will likely be something we consider in the future, but we're not there yet. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chair Ryan, you're on mute.
There we go. You're welcome, Madam Vice Chair, Lena Fowler. So Liz got knocked off. She'll try and hop back on. She's, he's asking us to move on. So, uh, Liz, uh, got knocked off, she'll try and hop back on. She's, he's asking us to move on, uh, though, and I think it's a good time. You, uh, you ready Kim?
I am.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Okay. So this kind of just actually is going to kind of close out this section, um, if you will. So we kind of took questions and comments, um, a little early, which is great. But this is just a quick little snapshot in terms of, um, again, wanting to, as, one, we're going to have on our website, where people can go and those links so that we can, that they have access. But this is also information that we are required to have all of our partners also have that information on the state website, so that as people get on that vaccine locator, they'll be able to see what's nearby them, to click on it, and also have the direct links to the, uh, organization of how to schedule, um, and those kinds of things. And I will, you know, I will definitely say that when we become aware of issues that our partners may be having, you know, we have relationships with these folks. We're, we're getting their vaccine orders every week and distrib- distributing to them. So if there are issues, we are sharing those with them in terms of, you know, is, are all your appointments booked? Or is there an issue with your website, for example? So we will continue, um, to, to communicate with them. The, the last piece I want to share here is that our, you know, again, our county allocation is critical, uh, because, for example, Sacred Peaks and NACA and the Veterans Administration, they're all providing vaccinations right now, here in Flagstaff. And all of those allocations are coming not from us. Those are allocations that they are getting directly from the federal government. Um, so, back to our conversation earlier, um, regarding some of our tribal nations, but then also the VA, the VA, uh, we know they have been scheduling appointments, um, and, and we are working to see what their capacity is as well, um, in, in terms of appointments, but they are providing vaccination to our residents here in Coquandino County, um, at Sacred Peaks and NACA and the VA right now. I mean, those are not directly included in our allocation. Okay, next slide was just questions and comments, and I think, um, we had gone through most of those. Chair, if you, um, want, I'll just continue moving on, or?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. All right. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. So, now we're going to talk about actually operate, operationalizing, uh, this vaccine mission. So, um, as has been discussed in the opening of this, as well as in the last couple of weeks, you know, vaccination is a, is the top priority for our county, and that there is really some additional essential discussion needed surrounding strategic positioning and anticipation of our rapidly increasing vaccine availability. And so with that, what that, uh, means is that we're, we taking in, taking the current, um, Incident Command Plan that we have, our, our Incident Action Plan, if you will, there's an A missing in there, sorry, um, and developing a mass vaccination plan with a, with strategic plan with a clearly identified path. So, that's going to include, you know, fully mobilizing all of our resources, certainly prioritizing our vaccine efforts as our county's number one priority, and then securing the additional resources that we're going to need to be able to, um, make this happen. And so with that, I am going to actually turn it over now, uh, to our Emergency Management Director and our Logs Chief with our Incident Command, and have him start talking about kind of what some of these additional resources that have been requested, and that we are in the process of securing, and then getting, uh, the board's questions answered around that, and then hopefully ultimately, uh, getting the board's, um, position on moving forward. So Wes, all you.
Good afternoon, uh, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board Members, thank you for your time today. Uh, I'm going to take you through, uh, the next three slides. And we're going to talk first about facilities, then we're going to talk about resources, staffing more specifically, and then we're going to talk about some of the wraparound costs and some of the wraparound items that are involved with whatever type of staging that we do here. I would like to emphasize that this is a very scalable plan that we've come up with. Um, going back to some of the modeling that Esler provided for you earlier, we can go from where we are today in our current vaccine footprint up to a very significant, uh, footprint, again, with vaccine availability and those other factors that we've already discussed. Um, all of what we're going to talk to, about today is included as part of our, uh, Incident Action Plan. Uh, we have a standard, uh, Incident Command System, Incident Action Plan that has been developed every week since this began. Uh, we are lucky, we have an extremely talented planning staff that is very good at our planning piece. So we are following all of those, uh, normal processes that, um, help us with reimbursements, help us with audits and all those things later on down the road. So, I'm going to ask, uh, Nick Hall to share in here, and he is going to show you some images here in just a moment. What you see here is a photo on the top there, the, the greenish, is a aerial view that is similar to what we are establishing. Ours will not have four arms, our proposals will have three arms. Um, you'll see off to the right, some generators up there in the right edge of the photo, and off to the left, you'll see what is the HVAC systems that come with these. They are essentially plug-and-play, uh, mass units, if you will, mobile hospitals. Uh, they can be configured in any, essentially any configuration that we need them to be. For our footprint, which you'll see here shortly, the three arms seems to be the most optimal, uh, uh, deployment. The bottom picture is more closely an image of what we will be receiving. Ours are not army green. Uh, the ones that we will be receiving, I hope, if we, if we are approved, will be more of that tan color, and the end of each one of those arms that you see looks similar to that doorway that you see there. So that's kind of what the image will, will, or the equipment will look like. We can establish, we've ordered two of these facilities. Each one of them will have the potential for dispensing three dispensing sites. So for a total of six dispensing sites completely, depending again on what we want to scale up or scale down. Uh, Nick, if you would go ahead and share in those, uh, maps for us, please? And I'd like to give kudos, kudos to Nick, uh, he has been working all weekend to put these together for us. Uh, you'll see here in a bit that they are scale diagrams, including parking spaces, and, uh, very, very detailed, so, uh, kudos to Nick. So this first one right here, this is what we have right now. This is what, uh, your team has in operation out at Fort Tuthill. Um, the red, large red arrows are just normal park traffic. The pink arrows that you see in the upper left are the current vaccine traffic, excuse me, the testing traffic. The large blue arrow is incoming and outgoing, um, snow park traffic. And then down in the bottom, you'll see some lime green, that is the vaccine site. We wanted to provide you this, just kind of an overview to give you a, uh, general orientation as to what we're looking at. You'll see that the current testing site down there in pink, which we've already established is being moved on Friday, uh, right in the heart of the, uh, Military Museum, um, piece, will transition to a different function, and we'll talk about that in the next map. Nick, can you take us to number two, please? Okay, so, um, once again, this is, uh, an overall orientation, as you can tell, we're zooming in here a little bit. We are, uh, going to give you more details in the following two slides. We are proposing at this point in time, and we have asked for the equipment to support two vaccine pods, the North Vaccine Site and the South Vaccine Site. Those each will have the capacity of, of either one, two, or three distribution points. The green arrows that you see there show some of the traffic flow that would be necessary to support that. We have a very strong contingent of Arizona National Guard that have supported us from the very beginning of this operation, and they will continue to assist us with the largest pieces of the traffic operation. Now, I will say, uh, as you see the following slides, we are overbuilding. Uh, the fact is, is that getting these resources is quite difficult. Uh, they are in high demand, and just getting the owners of these resources to let them go is a challenge, and we'll talk a little bit about that in just a minute. So we are overbuilding our capacity, but we want to make sure that we have every ability to, to deliver as many vaccines as we possibly can, assuming that we have vaccine availability. Next slide for. Okay, so what you see here is, uh, a little bit of a, an animation. You'll notice the, um, what is representative of the tents there. Let's talk about the north lot for a moment. That is the three-sided pod that we are, uh, proposing. Nick has gone through and done a detailed, measured, scaled plan for us to be able to deliver all the vaccines at a maximum of sixty spots per dispensing point. So we could be delivering all those vaccines, or half those vaccines, at any one point in time. We have staff parking for the group that will be there, it's a significant number of people. And then you'll see, in the back there, you'll see, uh, illustration of a generator and a couple of porta-potties for staff. The traffic will be the lime green on the right-hand side, and again, that'll be handled by our National Guard staff. We'll move down to the south pod. Now, what I will say is, um, the south pod, in its original design, which you're looking at right here, uh, is a duplicate of capabilities to the north pod. There was concern, and we'll talk about it in a moment here, about our impacting to the snow park uh, operations and to his parking for the, um, people coming to the parking. So, we have made an account for that, and we'll show an alternative plan in just a moment. We have staff parking, you'll see over there to the right, and again, the green arrows indicate the traffic flow that would be coming in slightly, but slightly down, if you'll just scan up a little bit for me, Nick. We're back into the Fort Tuthill, and if we go to this two-pod deployment, uh, in an effort really to, to make the environment as healthy for our, uh, staff as possible, we would offer them a lunchroom there in the, uh, the large barn at the Military Museum, so that they can leave the site, go over there, it's a short walk, unless you're in the snow, I suppose, and have lunch. So, that is our original Plan A, if you will. Nick, if you go to the next slide for me, please? Realizing and taking into account some impacts to snow park. Uh, we'll zoom in on the south pod. And Nick was really good with some orientation here, we changed things a bit, and we were able to develop the ability now to be at two dispensing points, you'll notice one arm is now gone. And we are still able to leave our current footprint that exists at the park as, as of today, alone, meaning that that large barrier on the left-hand side or the west-hand side, west side of the, um, diagram, we don't have to move that. So we don't have to take any spaces away, any additional spaces, from the snow park parking operations. So this is all an alternative that we're offering. Uh, it is my belief at this point in time that if we were to go to five dispensing points, we should still be able to meet our need, and, again, depending on vaccine, be able to service the public the way we, uh, we anticipate the need for. So those are some visuals for you, uh, that give you, uh, just an overall view of the plan that we have in place, and, and I would emphasize that it is scalable up and scalable down. So what I'd like to do now, Nick, if you'll share back out, and, uh, I would like to toss it over to Lucinda. Uh, she has some comments about this particular piece.
Great, thank you Wes, and, and I, I want the board to really understand that the resources that Wes is discussing, both in terms of these physical units, these, these base X units, as well as the staffing, um, is really coming through Wes's relationships and his knowledge of these systems and the people who, who may own and manage them. So I really commend Wes for stepping up with, you know, bringing that, that, uh, leveraging his resources for these to be able to move forward. So, one thing I wanted to share with the board is that I know that there had been a concern expressed about the impact on our partners at Fort Tuthill, specifically Flagstaff Snow Play, as well as a Flag Extreme. And, um, yesterday, Cynthia Nemeth and I, uh, conducted meetings over the phone with both, um, the owner of both of those operations. Some of you probably may know Paul, who owns the Flag Extreme, as well as Jonathan with the Snow Play. And, uh, first and foremost, I really want to share with you, they are true team partners. Uh, they, right off the bat, they both made statements about how they understand how critical this is, and that, you know, whatever, you know, they're really willing to work with us in any way they can. Um, even to the point of the, the Flag Extreme owner, Paul, you know, said straight out to me, um, you own these trees, you own this parking lot, you own this building, you know, whatever you need to do, we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll work through it. Obviously, they would like to keep their operations as limited impact, and I emphasize with them that the plan is to try to do that as best as we can. So we walked through with them yesterday, they're providing additional data today as to their traffic, you know, volumes, scheduling. Um, we got some good information, that's all been transferred over to Nick already from yesterday, and then, as that data comes in, we will continue to, to advance that model. A really key point of this, though, and those of you that have been down at Fort Tuthill, you know, when we've had a snow event like this, particularly before or during a weekend, that we get upwards of four to five cars in addition to the vehicles going to Flag Snow Play that come into Fort Tuthill to play in the snow at the park. And many times, they're parked everywhere. I mean, I think if you've been down there, you know, we've heard Parks and Rec discuss those impacts before, and obviously, different kind of impacts, but. So Cynthia and her staff are working very closely with Wes and with Public Works, and we're really looking at, is there a way to facilitate at least some snow play at the park, obviously away from the, the, the vaccination operation? Um, and, and support some of that, because obviously, anything that we don't, that we don't accommodate here at Fort Tuthill will likely end up on Highway 180. So, uh, we're, uh, frankly, Kim brought that up in the beginning, she's absolutely correct, that, you know, that we have to be considerate of that. Um, I guess I would submit that this is such a key mission. Um, yes, we have to consider it, we're going to do whatever we can to manage that, mitigate that issue. Uh, but there may be some limited impacts, but we're, again, we're trying to produce a plan that will, uh, minimize impacts both to our partners, and we will be meeting with them again later this week, as this, this plan continues to develop. So, thank you Wes.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Um, Erica, if you'd share back into slide nineteen for me, please? So, uh, the next point you see there is timeline. Um, I started placing orders for this equipment about, uh, almost a month ago now. Uh, I have replaced, I have placed redundant orders, and we'll talk about that in a moment. Um, so the delivery of this equipment and where it comes from is really completely out of our control. It could come from, uh, the valley, or it could come from another state if the feds were to be in support. So, timeline is hard to predict, however, we are targeting. And when I say targeting, we're aiming for this Saturday, the twenty-third, for the, um, beginning setup for these base X, um, installations, if we receive them from one of our either state, um, or federal partners. So the timeline is pretty tight and pretty aggressive, but we've been working this now for several weeks, so. Um, you'll notice, they're quite a large facility, they're, they are not simple, they're not your average little camping tent. They are very complicated. They come with generators, they come with HVAC, they come with lights, they come with, uh, computer networking. Uh, they're pretty complicated to set up. Um, back in twenty seventeen, we used, uh, Team Rubicon, if you're all familiar with that volunteer group, to help us set up the base Xs for a national exercise that I was, uh, director for when I was with the state. So Team Rubicon has given us a soft commitment to come out and help us set this equipment up. Huge contribution, and, and we would be very challenged to do it without them. And then the last bullet point here is we're talking about likelihood and pending approval. So I would emphasize, there's no guarantee here. There are a number of these facilities in and around the state. They are owned by, um, mostly cities, um, Phoenix, Glendale, Mesa, Tucson. Um, Navajo County has a small contingent of this equipment, much like the bottom-left picture. Um, but the, the full facilities are owned in many places around the state. One of the options that we have. One of the options that we have and, um, an individual that I know personally is the VA facility in Phoenix has two of these units. They're on trucks, they are ready to go, uh, but that is considered a federal asset. And under the Stafford Declaration to order that federal asset, we have to go through a long process involving FEMA Region Nine, uh, which is well underway. Uh, so I'm not sure where we're going to get this equipment or frankly, if we're going to get this equipment. Uh, it is a, an unknown, but we're working every avenue we can. Next slide, please. So staffing, uh, yes, we can have the building, we can turn on the lights, but we don't have the staffing. That doesn't do us a whole lot of good. Um, we, I have made three redundant requests intentionally to three different sources to try to gain staffing for this operation. And I did that because in my experience, we don't, we don't always get what we ask for. We don't always get the entirety of what we asked for. Sometimes we don't get any of it. So I won't go into the details here, but I made a request to the State Order Desk from the Arizona National Guard for staffing support. I was informed this morning that they will not be filling that request at all. Um, I think that's due in large part to the support that they are putting in other places, i.e., uh, the large mass operations in the Phoenix Valley, et cetera. So unfortunately, uh, that avenue is off the table for now. My second request is into FEMA Region Nine out of Oakland, California. The Incident Management Assistant Team there called me on the 15th, on the evening of the 15th, and I made a request through them. That would be a FEMA federal contract of some construction. I don't know what it would look like exactly. Um, and would provide us with some, uh, some support that way. The third request for staffing that was out there is a request through ADHS. Also came in late last week, um, asking if we needed potential for support. Uh, Mike Oxtoby is the point of contact on that one. But we provided them numbers and we have a request in for staffing that avenue as well. So again, there's a lot of variables, a lot of unknowns. We might get half of request number two and half of request number three or some other combination of percentages. So, um, very intentionally, we have redundant requests out there and we are overbuilding our capacity and we will scale appropriately as things start to come into focus. Likelihood of implementation and timeline. Um, so again, these requests are largely out of our control. Um, both the FEMA and the ADHS staffing would be a, likely a contract service that, um, FEMA or ADHS would put in place. We would not have direct contact with that. It would be something they would contract and they would arrange. If it is something similar to what happened this summer during the self-test surge, uh, we basically opened the site, the nurses showed up. They brought their own supervision with them. They answered directly to their contracting company. And when they were done, they went home. Uh, we just provided the numbers. So implementation and timeline again remains pretty fluid at this point in time. And as I get more and get more specific information, I will provide it, uh, up to the incident command for your awareness. Some significant risk there, and I mentioned it already, incomplete staffing, um, or staffing withdrawn. The staffing withdrawn is a little bit less of a risk in that once we have them on the ground, it's not likely that they'll pull them from us before we need, but that is a possibility. So for that very reason, I wanted to make sure that we avoided putting all of our eggs in one basket, either for the equipment or for the staffing. The, the must have a Plan B. Um, there definitely is, uh, an avenue. And this would be certainly a, a lift on the clinic side for a call to the community, a call of action, if you will, for local, um, medical, medically trained staff to support this operation. That would of course involve vetting and scheduling and, and a whole number of complexities. Um, but there is certainly that, that plan. When it comes to facilities for that plan, uh, we are working on a Plan B for that. Um, I can't tell you as of this moment that that plan is materialized. There's some variables that we're working to clarify. We should have some better information on that, probably hopefully by the end of this week. So I can provide you more detail with that as well. And again, I'd like to toss it back to Lucinda. I believe she has another comment here talking about staffing.
I just wanted to take a minute to just emphasize this prematurely withdrawn. You know, if they commit, you know, for X weeks or months or, or some timeframe that. I, I mean, I think we have to be realistic in terms of both, you know, the numbers, uh, that are, that are required to be vaccinated in the greater Phoenix area, Tucson area. I mean, you know, there is obviously both a numbers to that and a political con- consequence to that both. And so I think, you know, having this Plan B is really crucial. If we have to turn to local, you know, resources and, and it could look like a lot of different things, but to mobilize those local resources to go to more of a volunteer contingent, that takes a tremendous amount of organization and resources just to manage that. The, if we get these resources from the state or feds for staffing, they're really plug and play. People, we don't have to check licenses, et cetera, right? So, um, but it means that then we're putting all our eggs in that basket, which as, as long as we have a good, solid Plan B, uh, to me, that makes a lot of sense. So, thank you, Wes.
Yes, ma'am. And, um, Vice Chair, back to your point earlier, uh, if we end up in this particular contingent, I think that's one of those opportunities where you, you mentioned what can the, the board do? And this would certainly be a time for the board to voice themselves and, and encourage citizens to support the operation if that becomes a necessity. I, I hope it doesn't, but it certainly could. Uh, next slide, please. So this is my last slide. Um, and, and I will say that what we are talking about here is wraparound services for those two large pod operations that we spoke of. Uh, this is also scalable, equally scalable with, of course, the size of the pod that we deploy. Um, if we are fully scaled, fully open, running five or six distribution points out of both of those pods, we are probably in the neighborhood of about fifty thousand dollars a month in operational costs. Now, that is, um, a wide variety of things. I'll just, I'll talk about a couple of them. Uh, security, so these are tents. They are not lockable as, as a building. We do have resources that remain in those tents overnight, uh, laptops, printers, tables, heaters, things like that. So we would likely need some form of security at least overnight. A lesson learned from the State Farm facility down in Phoenix is a recommendation of security 24/7. If we're bringing this many people out to Fort Tuthill, let's say in full operation, um, that's a lot of people and we could certainly run the risk of somebody, um, having ill intent. So security is a question that is yet to be resolved. And I'm working that with Incident Command to figure out how we want to do that. On-site medical support. Currently, our footprint relies on the nurses that are on the site. We have several nurses on site. They're more than capable of, of handling, um, between, between 22 and 44 cars that are on the site at any one point in time. But if we scale up to a larger operation, another lesson learned from the State Farm is that they have a contract, uh, EMT and/or ambulance on site to deal with anything that might come up. That's rare in most cases, but it has occurred. We've had, uh, at least one medical response to our site. Um, it was minor, but it was a medical response. And the advantage to this is if we do have a medical response, this is the team that would handle that rather than our onsite staff having to shut down operations, which is what we do now to address the medical concern. That's another question I'm working with Incident Command to determine. Cones and barricades, pretty clear, traffic control. Uh, regular medical waste. If we operate at a full capacity, the regular medical waste will be a significant, um, task. Currently, the city of Flagstaff is supporting us with dumpsters and with disposal. Uh, we are looking into a contractual, uh, piece for the medical waste disposal, uh, to make sure we can up and handle that. Porta potties, gotta have them. Uh, that north lot has really no infrastructure at all, so we would need porta potties. Uh, I will say that, uh, our, one of our community partners has stepped up hugely and offered essentially to give us the porta potties for free, waiving their daily, um, rental fees. And it is a significant saving, many thousand dollars a month that the community partner has stepped up and offered. We would still, of course, have to contract with them for servicing. Um, but they've given us a very good, very good, uh, price. Parking space signage. So every one of those parking spaces that you saw in those earlier diagrams needs to have a number. North one, north two, north three. That is the process that we utilize because we are not a drive-through, we are a drive-in. We communicate a space number back to an admin staff member who processes and prepares paperwork, who then passes that paperwork to a nurse, who then goes out and delivers the vaccine, who then comes back and gives that paperwork back to the, to the, uh, admin for data entry and so forth. So we will need parking space signage. Uh, we're still working on some designs of that, but there is a, a little bit of a significant cost there. And then waters and snacks, water and snacks. Um, we would need to put in, uh, you know, uh, either drinking stations or bulk bottled water. Uh, we're looking at some of the, the costs and some of the advantages to those. And then snacks, so we do not, uh, provide lunches anymore as a totality for any of our response group. Uh, so we would need to at least provide snacks. Um, they're going to be out there for extended periods of time, uh, eight hours or maybe more if we end up doing that. So that is one of the other categories that we would have for, um, consideration. So the fifty thousand dollars a month, I will say is a soft number. Um, I, at this point, I don't anticipate going above that. The only thing that would have a significant impact on that would be full-time security and full-time onsite medical support. Those two could be fairly significant, uh, price tag items that might have an impact on that fifty thousand dollar, um, number. Uh, I'll pause here for questions and, uh, the next slide, I will pass back over, but I'll pause here for questions.
Okay. Uh, uh, before, uh, we're going to take a, a break in a minute here, but we'll, we'll pause for questions. Uh, let me call in Jimmy real quick here.
Uh, thank you, Chair Ryan, uh, and thank you, Wes, uh, for your report and, uh, all that, uh, you are doing to assemble scarce resources. So, uh, Chair Ryan, we are, um, we are halfway through our presentation. Uh, so my recommendation at this point, a consultation with, uh, with Ms. Musselman is to, uh, go ahead and, and vet the questions here. And then we'll take a short, a short break and then she will come back and, uh, dive into, uh, the next section of our presentation. Thank you.
Okay. So we pause for questions at this point? And let me see.
I have.
There we go, go for it, Liz.
Okay, thanks so much. So, well, number one, I'm very supportive of this. Um, number two, really appreciate you, um, you submitting the resource requests. Sorry to hear that the, uh, vaccinators got declined, um, but certainly, uh, I, I really appreciate the tenacity of continuing to, to submit those requests. And I think we should not give up with, at, you know, sometimes if we just, sometimes it's just, you know, timing is everything. And if you submit the same request again or a different request of with the, with the, maybe a little bit less numbers or whatever it is, I mean, maybe it can be, it'll come forward. But, um, I wanted to ask a little bit about, I mean, you talked about this, you talked about, you know, a call out to the community in terms of, um, in terms of folks. And I know, I think later on the presentation, we're going to get to volunteers. Um, but is this, is this resource then, is it based on, uh, volunteers as well? Like, so we would have to have volunteers run, um, help us run this particular site, is that correct?
Um, no, ma'am. If we receive either of the requests that now remain with ADHS or with FEMA, that would be the staffing to run this facility. If we are unsuccessful on all three of our current requests, now two remaining requests, then yes, ma'am, we would probably be looking at some other staffing structure. And I'll leave it to IC to talk about that specifically, but it would probably be a local volunteer type call to order.
Okay. And then in terms of, um, lunch for folks, are we providing like a per diem or anything? Or is that the, the, like, the National Guard or the folks that come in, do they get a per diem? I'm trying to figure that out.
Yes, ma'am.
In terms of that, in terms of that resource and what they get, what do they get? And why we're not doing that anymore?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, so, uh, the short answer is in our current footprint, county staff, uh, provides their own lunches. The National Guard staff that is deployed with us now, they do receive a per diem from the state as part of their deployment. So they are responsible for their own, uh, lunches and housing and everything else. If we end up with contract nurses, for example, from either FEMA or ADHS, they also generally come with per diem, uh, as part of their contracts back to the original contracting agency. So really, we are talking about our own county staff, uh, providing for themselves. Everybody else is under a per diem structure.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, all right, well, I, so I appreciate that. So you're, you're getting the, you said that the timing of this in terms of getting an answer is, um, when? Can you just go over that just one more time?
Yes, ma'am. So I'll be frank, I'm waiting for my phone to ring at any moment. Um, at this point, I received a call this morning, as I did from the National Guard. Um, the next call will probably either be to Mike Oxtoby or myself from ADHS about that possible option. Uh, the FEMA option, I can tell you that there is a strong emphasis at FEMA with a favor toward Arizona right now. I don't know why that is, I, I can't speak for that. But I can tell you that I received a call from the state, uh, late, I believe it was Friday night, if I remember correctly, um, like seven or eight at night. And FEMA actually called me at nine or 10 o'clock the same night. And that is, uh, kind of unprecedented, to be honest. Um, and they took my order that night. Uh, so it's just a question, ma'am, uh, supervisor of waiting, uh, at this point. If I have not heard something by about the middle of this week, I will be rattling cages again. Probably won't do a lot of good because it's a slow machine and it will get here when it gets here. But they all know that our target is Saturday, the 23rd.
Okay. And then lastly, uh, in terms of just the, in terms of just, um, like, I, I'm just concerned because we have like our folks that are working out there, they're working in the elements, they're working really hard. I mean, I think a lunch for people is absolutely appropriate. And so I'm trying to figure out where that decision was made.
I'll leave that over to Incident Command, um, for, for her input.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, Supervisor Archuleta, Chair Ryan. The, when we were operating, well, as we've been submitting reimbursable expenditures through FEMA, um, as we have been, uh, doing all of those things, the food became an issue where they were stopping, uh, reimbursement. And so at the point and the eligibility for reimbursement. So at the point in time as we were transitioning to vaccinations, um, bringing on vaccinations, that's when we knew that we got nothing for reimbursement for vaccinations. And so as we brought on that staff, that's when it was decided that we would stop doing the lunches that we had been providing for the testing, for the folks at the testing site. Um, and because we weren't going to be able to provide it, at least out of current resources, obviously, certainly as a board, that's a decision that you can make in terms of utilizing county resources. But just with respect to operating in what at the time we understood to be, you know, limited with respect to, um, resource availability and the, and the fact that we would not get any kind of form of reimbursement, that's when those, uh, that decision was made. So that was just within the last couple of weeks when we transitioned into, uh, vaccinations. So certainly that's something the board can direct us otherwise to do, um, at, at, at the county's expense. If that should be the board's desire.
And if I can add on to that a little bit, um, again, with some experience from the state, when auditors look at providing lunches, it's generally considered to be a necessity during times of, um, you know, critical response, lights and sirens phases, we often call it. Now we're at a pace where it really is not difficult for people to leave, get lunch, come back, take lunch breaks. So the necessity for them to be in a particular location for eight hours and to receive food supplement during that time is really non-existent at this point. So from an audit perspective down the road, it really is a, um, a reasonable decision on the county's part to say, we stopped. county's part to say, we stopped essentially spending federal money, right, and reimbursement money on food because people are able to go get their own. So it's a very sound decision for down the road audit purposes.
Yeah. And, you know, and I certainly understand it in that environment, but we had an environment where people were working longer hours and non-stop and continuous. And so if we're going to have that environment again, where folks are going to do that because they're getting shots in arms and they're going to be working, you know, long hours and under those conditions, then I would say that I would expect that this would be brought back up to us again.
Understood ma'am.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, can I have a couple of questions?
Yeah, go for it Patricia.
Thank you. Chairman Ryan and also Wes, thank you so much. This is a, I hope this comes through. It's an exciting opportunity for Kokino County. So fingers crossed, if for some reason it doesn't come through, is there a Plan B if the pods are not available?
So yes ma'am, we are working on a Plan B. We have the availability of a tent that the county owns that could be set up. It would be a smaller footprint. It would really be optimal for probably a single pod with two distribution points, one out each end. So we do have an alternative. It would be certainly a smaller scale than what we're talking about. And then we could also look at going back into the physical structure, the building there at Fort Tuthill and utilizing that. There's some challenges because of the parking and the 15-minute observation time with use in the building, but it's something that we've liked that.
Thank you. And then the other question is, do you have an estimate, well, these are kind of connected questions, but is there an estimate of what the capacity would be per pod? Supervisor Bagay, I think you've got your, you don't have your mute on? There you go, thanks. Thank you Supervisor Bagay. Is it possible, do you have a capacity of how many vaccinations can be given utilizing each pod?
So, yes ma'am.
And availability, but assuming availability and staff?
Yes ma'am. So the way we're currently set and the footprint that we currently have, and I certainly encourage all of you to visit if you haven't already, the current footprint that we have is delivering right now 22 vaccinations an hour. And we have parking that allows for the nine o'clock hour to arrive, to be processed, to be vaccinated. And then while they're there, the next 22 for the next hour are arriving in the next parking lot. And we just rotate back and forth. We have planned with this larger scale deployment for the exactly the same process, except we have 30 parking spaces for a total of 60 parking spaces for each pod, delivering 30 vaccines an hour for, you know, the six, eight, 10 hours, whatever Incident Command directs. So our capacity is quite scalable, up or down.
So it's approximately double? And is it approximately double the staffing that would be necessary as well?
Well, Madam Supervisor, based on the, based on the scale, it's actually, it could be up to six times what we are currently doing. And yes, the staffing scales pretty much penny for penny.
Very good. And then is there any idea how numbers in terms of, I know that we're looking at an August 1, if we were looking at 921, 929 vaccines daily. Any idea the numbers or breakdown on 1B numbers versus 1C numbers? How many people we would need to vaccinate to complete 1B or how many people to complete 1C?
No ma'am, I do not have that number breakdown. That is something that potentially Ashley could break in. I do not have that number for you at this time. I see Kim just jumped on though, I would toss it over to Incident Command.
Thank you.
Supervisor Horstman and Essler, I know you're still on and I don't believe that the model that you're working on actually breaks this down by priority area, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. But, and so Supervisor Horstman, in today's presentation, I actually don't have that at my fingertips, but we will get that because that, what that number that showed you that August 1st date, that accounts for vaccinating, well, well into phase two. So, so I can say that, like that second, because you were talking about the middle column in that graph, correct? Yeah. That would account for getting well into and likely even completing, I mean, close to, obviously that says 58%, right? So, but we would be well into phase two and potentially even complete phase two at that 58%. But I would want to get back to you on that to be completely accurate.
And that would be both doses, since we have a two dose.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
All right, I have Supervisor Bagay up next. We're not hearing you Judy.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to say is that the presentation is good. I, just like other board members, you know, we should, you know, we hurry get this thing going, but I'm glad that all the contacts have been made and that also we're pretty much, you know, all together on this, you know, to make sure that, you know, we get to the people that, that need the help to get, you know, the vaccinated. So I just want to thank all the staff there for diligently working together and, you know, actually getting information together so that, you know, this presentation could be made. So I just want to say thank you, everyone there on the phone and then also my colleagues and then also Board Press, I mean, the President, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Bagay and Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, thank you, Chair Ryan. I want to ask about staffing. You said that you're going to need, you have 10 FTEs right now and you, with the model that you presented, you're going to need at least 40 more. Those FTEs, do they go through our, and they're all like the various licenses and do they need to go through our HR, be advertised? How does that come in since this is, we need them right now? How do we advertise and how do we bring them in? There is a shortage of nurses and other medical professionals. So how do we work to be, what's the plan in bringing these professionals in right away so that we can really get this operation, stand it up and start providing the service?
So, Madam Supervisor, Chairman, if we receive staff through one of these requests that we have out there through ADHS or through FEMA or if we'd received through DEMA, all of that pre-vetting would have been done. That's one of the big advantages to that particular approach. If we end up and do not receive any staffing from any of those three opportunities and we have to go to local call to action, then it would be an entire hiring process and I'm not familiar with that, I'm not involved in that. I would toss that back over to Kim. But our first options that I've outlined for you here are our best and simplest, but we do have a plan in place if we end up having to go out to the general public and I'll give it back over to Kim for that.
Thank you Wes. Vice Chair Fowler, I would just add that with respect, if we don't get one of the two options that Wes has described, that what, and as we go to utilizing a volunteer medical corps, there are lots of things in place right now that allow for, one, as our VEP system allows for people to already be vetted about licensure, there's also because we are under an emergency, the local boards, so for example, the nursing board, other medical provider boards, there are actually waivers that can be issued for folks who maybe are retired but used to be licensed and some other things. So those are factors that we are already considering and as we are working on always a Plan B in tandem with the things that we've got out there, we already have staff that are working on following up with some of those folks that have already been referred to us that are interested in volunteering in this kind of operation. So they would not need to go, what our intent would be is that they would not go through, have to go through the HR process and all of those things. We would utilize especially the medical volunteers and utilize our volunteer agreements that are already established with the county and with HR so that it wouldn't be something that is hung up. We don't have to advertise it in the same way. This is under an emergency situation, so we have a lot more flexibility with that. There are a few things and we'll talk about this more after we break, but just in terms of, there's some potential additional costs with some of that, which is some workman's comp coverage and other things, but it is certainly something that we are already working on and know that, some ways in which we can get that into place. But as was indicated earlier, if we have to go down that, that road, that's a whole nother big lift in terms of management and oversight to get those folks on board, which we're willing to do, but certainly we're trying to go with these other options first.
You're good Supervisor Fowler? Lena?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay. Any others? Okay. One, you know, excellent, excellent presentation all the way through. Thank you Kim. Thank you Lucinda Essler and now Wes, moving us on. But we've been going for over two hours and some people can't break away, so it's a good time. I'd say let's take, come back at 3:30, take 10 minutes, give you just a little bit of extra time to get a break and come back, but stay on track associated with this. All right. Thank you all. How are we doing out there?
Mr. Ryan, we are ready. All five supervisors are ready.
Excellent. Let me just check in. I didn't do that in the beginning of the meeting, but it'd be good for me just to check in, make sure. So let's see, start with District One Supervisor Horstmann. All right, looks good. Doesn't look like it's snowing in your picture there, though.
Yeah, the sky is too blue.
That's right. And then District Two Supervisor Archilata.
I'm here. Thank you.
Excellent. And then Supervisor Four, Supervisor Four, District Four Supervisor Begay, Judy.
I'm here Supervisor Matt Ryan.
All right, fantastic. And then just District, what's the next number? Count to five. District Five Supervisor Fowler, Lena?
The most important district. I'm here.
Look, I have, you know, the horseshoe bin cop, yeah. There we go. Okay, well, we're, we're we're running a little bit time behind in terms of time. We are behind. But I think we're getting very important pieces. This is definitely our priority that we have that we're trying to address with the community. So the next piece that we were stepping into, we have Kim to present on that. So, Kim?
Thank you. And Erica will be pulling up the presentation. And as I looked through some of these other slides, there's a few that are coming up that I've already touched on a little bit, and so I can move kind of quickly through some of them, certainly not. Certainly not at the expense of any questions that any of the supervisors may have, but just so that you are all aware. This kind of dovetails off of what Wes and the conversation regarding staffing and and right now just wanted to give you all a quick review of what our current staffing is out at the vaccination site, and that's 10 FTEs. And that staff and volunteers that are needed to successfully implement the scale up operations based on that six lane model as Wes was sharing with you is an additional 40 FTEs. And so we've kind of broken that out just to give you guys an idea of it's not just medical staff, it's all of these other components, you know, three to four call center staff or specialty groups. Certainly, we need additional folks there. 12 staffing to enter medical demographics, six nurses, one per lane. And then, of course, all of this is scalable as well, depending on how many hours we are operating our vaccine testing or vaccine allocation hours. Staff assigned to six staff assigned to medical charting because for each, for all the nurses and giving vaccine, there's charting involved and then to medical oversight staff, that is our responsibility in terms of our operation and if we utilize volunteer and other folks that remains our obligation. And even with respect to bringing on the other groups, they come with oversight and management, but we still have a level of oversight and management that we need to do because this is still a county operation, even when we bring in those other entities. And then for medical assistance to draw vaccine so that all of the doses can be properly drawn down to make sure we are accurately utilizing the doses, the precious doses that we get. So the highest risk component of scaling up is, and this is just to kind of give you a picture of the difference between the ADHS and National Guard FEMA model versus the realities of local resources that would mostly be volunteer resources. So as was mentioned earlier, if that's where we go, have to go with the Plan B or Plan C, that's of course going to require additional partner support to accomplish. And we may require fuller, partners may require full or partial cost recovery if we end up implementing some of those in other entities into it. And then, of course, a volunteer management system would be required as has been mentioned on numerous occasions as being a piece that will be a resource component if we don't get some of these other resource allocations that we've requested. So next slide, please. Just wanted to touch on so that the board is aware and we'll be bringing additional stuff back to you, but this was to give you kind of an outline and a picture of what other additional resources we've identified as needing specifically some software costs for a registration system and external API modules. And what I mean by that is the, we are looking and, and I know Matt is, Matt Fowler is also on this presentation and I'm going to ask him in just a minute to just pop in briefly, but really, we're looking at, you know, how, how we can transition away from the Eventbrite registration system, go to something a little more robust, but that will ultimately, and even more importantly than just transferring from the Eventbrite is also looking at the ways in which we can have the registration system that then we can also pull into our records management utilizing these applications that allow the systems to talk to each other. And we're going to be talking a little bit more about that when I, when I do. And actually, I may kind of take things out of order just so that I, we can talk about that with respect to the, the IT related component, but then, of course, additional laptops and hardware as we're staffing up will certainly be needed if we don't get these other resources from the, from either ADHS or FEMA. Additional hotspot for wireless connectivity, additional tents for staffing. I know Wes had identified some of the things that we would need, but then there's also the potential for a few other tents needed for some of the back, back room operations that, that we're calling them that I'll be going more into detail. Portable heaters, obviously, it's winter out there and we need to keep our people warm because the, the base X is that he describes come with that and we wouldn't have those issues. But if we have to do a different type of model, we've got more need for heating and then additional insurance for needle sticks. That is a piece in terms of on the liability side. And then, as I'd mentioned before, workman's comp for volunteers and I, I don't know, Matt, are you on? I don't know if now is a good time to kind of just quickly bring you on to talk not only about just the API discussion, but then really I can kind of jump ahead to actually slide 29 and maybe we talk about both of these things and then I can come back if, if that's all right with Chair Ryan. I kind of restructure a couple of things just in the
Yeah, absolutely. And Matt, Matt's our IT Director. Is he in the attendees?
Yes, I'm online Chair Ryan and
And so Matt, before I ask you to, to jump in here, I just kind of want to lay a little additional groundwork here. So we have been exploring all of the options, including the state system. The state has a system. I know we had talked with you all briefly about that. And that, that state system comes with a bunch of challenges on the backend. And again, these are decisions that ultimately, you know, if, if the board direction is such, you know, we will, we will pivot and do what we need, but as I had indicated before, some of the concerns regarding the state system solely as it works, there is no capacity right now to get information back out of it for our constituents who we know, especially in Coconino County, because the expectation has already been, been, been laid in, in the many things that we've been providing for years. There is no way to ingest and have the information come out of the state system that can go into our system with, to be able to, at this point that we know of, to be able to then give information back out when, when our constituent calls up and says, I need a copy of my vaccination record because I'm about to get on a plane. You know, to go to Europe or whatever, assuming that there's some, you know, things that get implemented about needing to have vaccination. And so we're really trying to, at the front end of this, look at ways to address that before we just jump into another system. And so Matt's been working closely with our team, specifically with Sarah Schildecker, our clinical division director, and also Michelle Axelin in terms of looking at how we evaluate that and the, the things that we need. We need software that has the capacity for pre-registration for users with fewer registration questions and that result in a positive end user experience. We need additional capacity for registering individuals in the county's medical system. That's going to need to be added in operations. And again, as I had said, if this capacity isn't included, then what the, what the consequence of that is that we will not have the capacity for medical record management to meet, you know, citizens' requests about that. So with that being said, as I indicated, we are not in a position right now to make a recommendation of what we want. There's still a lot of investigation going on and Matt and his team are making lots of phone calls and gathering lots of information. And so I just wanted him to share real briefly kind of where things sit and, and kind of what his recommendation is for our path right now. And then I will wrap up with a couple of other things about this specific need and then go back to the presentation. So Matt, please.
Sure. Thank you, Kim, Chair Ryan and members of the board. Yeah, I think the main takeaway, Kim said it very well in regards to the intro, but the real problem right now is data sharing. And so, you know, currently we use the Eventbrite software that was selected by HHS. The customers or citizens are therefore inputting all of their data into Eventbrite and then that is ingested into our e-clinical works platform that's managed by HHS and that's our medical software. So if a citizen calls, you know, for a dependent or for the, for themselves, our staff can immediately have access to that data and respond to the citizen request and provide them with valuable information. Currently, the state system by AZDHS is, you know, what you see on the news, Maricopa County and all the large areas are leveraging the POD vaccine website, which has stood up from the state. And so, of course, the state wants all the municipalities to leverage the online registration system that they've implemented. What we're seeing is really bad delays currently, like if you look on Twitter or other social networking sites, some, some of the citizens are taking 30 minutes, 45 minutes or up to an hour just to gain access to the website to then access, you know, the event information for where they can go to their vaccination site. But the big dilemma or the challenge is, is if our citizens are registering through the state system, we essentially lose access to the data to respond to their needs, questions or concerns. We essentially would be in liaison and saying, we're sorry, we don't have access to your data. Please contact the state. Please contact AZDHS. So what I'm doing is working with the CIO with Department of Health Services requesting a, an API, which is an applica, an application programmable interface, which will allow us to basically have a hook into either their software system or possibly into ACIS, which is another software platform that the, that the state system has to by statute every, I believe, 24 hours, they have to upload these files. And so what we're seeing on our side with initial testing is that we're not seeing all the data. It's, it's, it's very poor data access to, to be honest, right now. So the ability to modify records, the ability to bill, to view healthcare information, to look at charting data, to understand the dosages that were received, we, we essentially are blind, you know, at this time if we leverage the state software. So currently we are using Eventbrite, so that's not the challenge today. We can still have access to all the information. But we need to make some decisions here in the near future. Do we want to leverage the state software and work out all the kinks and hopefully have access to some of the shared resources and data? Do we want to have our own registration system that we manage that fully integrates into our records management system? So if, you know, if the citizen does call, we have immediate response. Those are things that we're still trying to better understand our options and make recommendations back to Health and Human Service, Health and Human Services. Again, ultimately revisiting this with the board, looking for direction on what makes the most sense. You know, not only for our citizens, but also for our board members.
So thank you, Matt.
You have, Jimmy wanted to make a comment here.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Ryan and members. Thank you, Matt, for, for the expertise that you bring to this conversation and your perspectives. I think one of the things I want to stress with the board is that Eventbrite in its current form is not working. It is not, it, we can do better than this, I guess, is my point. It has filled a role for a period of time. And now what is the path forward? And that's what we'll also be spending some time over the next couple of days, as, as Kim had indicated earlier, that we are still digesting this. Eric Peterson is, is involved in that conversation as well, as long as, as well as the team, but there's some definite Uh, but there's some definite feelings about this. I know I was on the Maricopa County site, uh, this morning. Trying to get a, a family member registered and had a real user experience of what it is even lacking in incapacity. And have a real front-hand knowledge of the frustration that people are having, both with Eventbrite and now with. Uh, with examples like the Maricopa, this, the state system, uh, that is being used in the Maricopa County area. So I think, uh, one of the things that I would commit to you is that the team is engaged in this. The right players, including Kim, Matt, Eric and others. Uh, that we will find the right solution and recommendation. We'll be coming back to the board on the 26th. Uh, with some additional details on many issues, uh, including an update on this one, but please know that your voice has been clearly heard. Uh, and I have, some of us have actually experienced it. Uh, and we can do better than this, uh, and we will moving forward. Uh, just need to, a little bit of more time to develop what that recommendation is, uh, that the team supports. Uh, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jimmy. Go ahead, Kim.
Thanks, Chair Ryan. Uh, the last piece that I wanted to just speak about in there is that ultimately if we don't include that capacity. And we're not able to get there, the plan B behind that is again, that if medical registration needs to be completed at the site. And that's an option that we have, that we could, we would need an additional 12 administrative support staff to do that. So that we could gather that information at the site. Um, it's not ideal by any means, because then we would be asking people to enter their information and then we would have to gather it again. If we're not able to extract it from whatever system, but just wanted to share that in terms of the things that we're evaluating and looking at to hopefully best. To find the best solution in as short a time as possible, um, as, as we're, uh, you know, as I said before, continuing to uh, build the airplane while we're flying it. So with that, um. I know we've already touched, um, quite a bit on vaccination partners, but there's a couple of additional pieces that are included in these particular slides. Um, and, and I know this one I've actually. Spoken on and I had mentioned to you all as well, uh, with respect to the Sacred Peaks, NACA and BA all receiving their allocations directly. And not included in the, the CC allocation. The other piece that is going to be crucial to all of this as well is really. You know, once we add and show the capacity of all of those Safeway pharmacy, just Safeway. As one pharmacy partner, because they have so many locations throughout our county. Next slide, please. So again, I, I think I've covered most of this. Um, certainly our. Uh, just kind of walking you through where our expansion has gone and our initial rollout plan that included our partners. Uh, with capacity rolling out phase one A concurrently. Um, with our vaccination site. And then of course, that began with three locations for vaccinating. And then our outside entities that are not within our Coconino County allocation are also assisting. In the allocation efforts and those, as I said, those allotments aren't included in ours. And then of course, those long-term care facility, federal partnerships with Walgreens and CVS, those are not included, um, in our allocations either. So on this piece, the, just what I wanted to point out here is that in terms of some, you know, our, the outreach and mobile vaccination sites. Because one of the things that I want to make sure that as the board is making decisions about our scalable. Response, that we are considering. How we scale, say at Fort Tuthill, or how we have to scale at Fort Tuthill versus what opportunities are presented for us. If we are not utilizing as much capacity here in, at the Fort Tuthill site. What that can potentially free us up to be able to do, uh, throughout and around the county. And that is ultimately our ability to adapt to some mobile capacity. Uh, because, because it's, it's so important and, and I know each of you would agree, we must ensure equity with respect to. Being able to get vaccine out and throughout our county into those who are likely to have even less access than those. Who one, either live in Flagstaff or are incredibly tech savvy and all of those pieces. And so we have a couple of options around that. Um, option one is to continue relying on our private retail and clinical partners. Who are currently administering doses in those remote, remote areas, as I said, and who we continue to bring on more. The other option that we have, um, that just presented itself, uh, as far as a funding source that, that could be also. Uh, additionally helpful here is to pursue some new CDC, ADHS funding opportunities. Um, to, to introduce some necessary capacities, specifically some equipment, staffing, maybe a mobile. I know the clinic has always had a dream of a mobile, uh, a mobile clinic, a mobile van that can, that when we travel to our outlying. Locations, uh, for mobile operations and that as we look into pursuing. Uh, this option to get some additional funding that we could look at extending, expanding, excuse me, that mobile capacity. To really be able to reach out, um, countywide. On even a different scale. So I just put that out there, one, to let the board know we're already working on that. Um, and, and that, that is a, a top priority as we are looking at this in the big picture of how we. Provide equitable distribution of vaccine as well. So moving on to, uh, the next section, and this was the piece I kind of jumped ahead with, uh, with Matt as well. So the next slide, Erica. We had, excuse me, let me line up my notes here. So utilizing all available resources. So just wanted to. Bring to the board's attention and make sure, you know, that you're. Fully confident that at this point in time, all available resources that have been identified, uh, to date. Um, obviously including those potential staffing options that both Wes. Uh, and myself have talked about, um, we have gone over repeatedly, the National Guard, of course, the ADHS. Ask as well, that we, you know, just got a call about on Saturday, uh, letting us know that we were, because of our production and our performance. In being able to get the vaccine that we've been allocated thus far out and, um, into people's arms. That's why we got the phone call from ADHS. We were top of the list to be offered up, this is a resource and, and Wes and. And Mike and others, we scrambled to get utilizing our, our action plan to be able to know what kinds of numbers we'd be needing to be able to make that request. Of course, all of our existing HHS staff and additional volunteers. And what I will say is even with our existing HHS staff right now, even the folks working out. At Tuthill, our additional staff that are part-time or other past employees that we have brought back. That are assisting out there at that offer, operation. So as we are working on the plan B, as we are, you know, doing a parallel process here, certainly that replacement or additional staffing plan. You know, to include volunteers in retired medical personnel, you know, everything from currently operating doctors, nurses, dentists, pharmacists, paramedics. Um, I just saw the other day, you know, veterinarians, um, all of those that are authorized to administer vaccine. And then really at that point of when we're, as we're developing this, you know, the timing of the call to action to mobilize our local resources. Really making sure that that's a part of our strategy in terms of when that call to action. Is necessary. I mean, some of that call to action is already taking place, but, but a more formal call to action for those resources. And then of course. Really that infrastructure to organize those resources are, are things that we're going to. Also going to need to be factoring in to all of this. So. This next section, we want to go into is just kind of talking about our current resource inventory, inventory as well as. Just a, a picture, overview for you all with respect, excuse me, with respect to our expenditures. And I'm actually going to ask. Michelle Axelin, uh. One of my deputy HHS directors to jump on here because for this next slide, she's going to. Help in terms of kind of walking through, just so that the board has just a high level overview here. Um, certainly we have the opportunity to meet with you individually and have additional conversations, but wanted to make sure that this was a component of our discussion. Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors and Kim. Um, so at the top section, you're looking at our expenses as of yesterday at, to our COVID response. We have broken our expenses down into what we require as projects. So each of those projects represent one of the arms or tentacles of the octopus of COVID that we're working on. And so those are the costs assigned since the beginning. So we're crossing fiscal years in this, um, so we're at 4.6 million currently. For revenue, this is where it gets interesting. We've got the DEMA FEMA reimbursement. Currently we've got through express pay a little over a million. We have potentially 1.1 million more on our current expenses listed above that we could get back. ADHS, thanks to the great advocacy that this board did and the county managers. 1.9 million is coming in through a variety of things. Those are those blitz testings. It's also the special ask for the tier one alternative care center to help cover those expenses again listed above. We have two ELC grants. Um, those are the special CDC grants that we applied that Kim has mentioned before. That is an 18-month grant, so it's a little misleading to say, oh, you guys have 6.6 million. That's great. You've got everything covered. That actually is supposed to go until February 2022. So on the specimen collection, which can roll over to vaccine, we have only billed out a little over a hundred thousand dollars so far. So we do have capacity. To move that into the vaccine realm and help cover some costs there based on the board, um, decisions of which way you would like us to go. Epidemiology and contract tracing at 1.7, we will pull that all down. Um, that is continuing to go with contract chasing, monitoring and the Epi reports. NACA has graciously helped us with the alternative care center with 45,000. And then Kim mentioned. We have the potential to write for some more vaccination grants based on the direction again that you provide. So we're looking at potentially in revenue over the next year coming out of 7.7 million and I'll stop there.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, so at this point in time of. Chair Ryan, I would like to ask if there's any other questions, because what's planned next in the presentation. Is really kind of circling back to that managing expectations and then having Eric share. Uh, with you all, the vaccine communications campaign plan and overview. Um, in, into the next section of our presentation, which will ultimately, just so you all know, actually wrap us up. Um, with respect to then going back to Jimmy for some final wrap-up and actually, um, identifying kind of those next critical decision points.
All right. Excuse me. Uh, thank you, Kim. And thank you, Michelle. And so pause for our questions, uh, here with the board. This is when everybody tries to get a hold of their, you know, that. There you go.
I have, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, Mr. Chair and Liz, I'm going to wait till the end. So, um, this has been excellent information. So I'll just wait to ask my questions at the end.
Okay, Liz?
Okay. Super. So I actually want to go back to, uh, the slide that said staffing needs review. For the current vaccination staffing, the 10 FTE, and then it talks about, um, the. Kind of laddering up for, uh, this six-lane model. So this particular model is that, is that based on the, um. The model that they're using over at the, uh, State Farm Stadium? Or this is just like our, our own model? Cause I'm trying to understand the, um. The medical providers, the six licensed medical providers for pre-screening, um. And then the medical, I think I understand the medical charting in terms of we're trying to interface with, um. Over the long term with the state vaccination system so that we have record of people's, um. Vaccination, if that's correct. If not, correct me on that. And then the two medical oversight staffs. So I'm. I need a little bit more information on those, the roles that those folks are, are going to be having. And then. How does this compare to what's being done over at the State Farm Stadium? And then, and then after that, I have a question just about volunteers.
So Madam Supervisor, if I may quickly, I'll, I'll do the State Farm piece and then I'll, I'll leave the other specifics to Kim. The State Farm piece is a actual drive-through. They have, uh, I believe eight or 10 lanes. I'm not sure at this point, but. It's an actual drive-through, so the staffing is different. We brought the Arizona National Guard who set up State Farm. They came up last week. They surveyed our sites and did not feel that drive-through was a model for us. Because they're actually doing the waiting period as those cars are moving through the line. We don't have that much space. We don't have that ability. So our setup is different in terms of how we. Interact with each of the vehicles. That's why we're set up a little bit differently. So State Farm is a drive-through. We are a drive-up. We are vaccinating while in the car, but we're not moving them through lines like they are at State Farm or at the other, uh, mass sites in Phoenix.
Okay. And our, uh, limitation for a drive-through versus what we're doing the drive-up is. Basically just the footprint, the land, or what is our limitation to, to not consider that model?
Yes, ma'am. They didn't feel that our, that essentially land, you, you summed it up correctly. Essentially that and being able to. Make sure that we don't back traffic up so the, the incoming roadways into Fort Tuthill. Are just not built for large capacities of traffic. There are only one way, as you well know. Um, so being able to ensure that we don't back up traffic out to the checkpoint or over onto I-10. Uh, which has been a concern all along for all of our exercises. They did not feel that we would have an effective drive-through operation because of those limitations.
I-17.
Okay. And then, um.
Yeah, I just, uh, yeah, yeah. Wes is still down in the valley. It's I-17, but, uh, yeah, um, go ahead, Liz.
My apologies.
Right. And then the, um, the workman's. For tiers. So we don't have, um, we don't have that programmed in our regular insurance. That would be an increased cost. In terms of the county just regularly having that available.
So thank you Supervisor Archuleta. I'm actually going to have Michelle jump back in and assist with some of these answers, because she was doing additional research on, on that. So Michelle.
Supervisor Archuleta, great questions. Um, so for the workman's comp, it is brought on per volunteer. So that is a cost that is incurred if we go with the volunteer methodology. We also, um, learned recently after a needle stick that the county's new insurance does not cover baseline testing, which is a standard in medical practice for when you have a stick. So that would be just an additional cost. We would feel the need, especially with volunteers, to make sure their health is protected. Um, if they have an accident needle stick. On the staffing question, um, so yes, we did base this after the State Farm. A lot of this is what we'll call the backend. They do have a call center where they're answering. We felt that to have three to four staff that could help do those hand calls or register our seniors. To assist with that would be great. Um, the 12 staff are entering medical demographics. That is a different model than the State Farm. That is something they're not doing, as we've already discussed there. The six nurses is a State Farm model. The medical providers was a recommendation from, um. Dr. Carol, when we met with him on the Blue Cross Blue Shield call of allowing them to pre-screen individuals that presented with, um, issues, medical health issues or questions. That they could answer those while they're in line or there. Um, the six staff assigned to medical training, we already talked about that. The oversight is to ensure any medical issues or concerns are addressed as someone's getting a vaccine. And then the efficiency of the medical assistance to draw, that is something the State Farm uses.
Okay. Um, so thank you for that. Um, and so I just want to talk a little bit about volunteers and about, um. The consideration of mobilizing volunteers through United Way. I know that, um. The last time I spoke about that, I really wanted to see, uh, what we could do in terms of mobilizing United Way for volunteers. And so what has been put into that?
So thank you Supervisor Archuleta. I have not had a chance to have a conversation directly with, uh, Carol yet regarding. The capacity and their ability in terms of helping mobilize. And I, I think that you're also, and correct me if I'm wrong Supervisor. Also looking at, uh, their capacity to hopefully also help kind of manage those volunteers. I think that was kind of where you were going with that as well. Thank you. And so I, I, I.
I think probably the non-medical.
Right. Yeah. So I, I commit to having that conversation hopefully as early as tomorrow. I just have not been able to connect. Um, with Carol Dykes at this point in, in terms of really fully vetting that. And so I will, I will absolutely get additional information back to you on that as soon as possible. And I apologize that I don't have that today.
Okay, great. Thank you. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. One more thing, the, the mobile. So I, and one of the things that I was talking about with, um. Oh, Dr. Carol was, um, like a mobile, definitely mobile, like, you know, maybe we just need to look into, you know, I know it's a little bit of talk about, about. I know a little bit of talk about about mobile and like really communities that perhaps where transportation is an issue, you know, actually targeting certain neighborhoods that might have a hard time getting to the, to a site like Fort Tuthill, et cetera. And so really looking forward to some additional, you know, information on that.
Absolutely Supervisor.
Like actually like a van, you know, like a van, a mobile, a mobile van.
Well, and that's why, thank you for that. Why, I know, and Michelle often talks of this in terms of she's been trying for wanting to get for years to be able to get it, get one of those mobile vans. And so this other grant may provide that perfect opportunity for even for us to procure something that we can have in the long run. But yeah, that would be ideal. And one of the things that I will share with you though Supervisor and and Board that I've had conversations with Dr. Ann Newland at North Country Healthcare, and they have a mobile clinic and they just got another new one. And she committed to me last week when I was talking to her on Friday that they intend to put that into use to deploy for vaccinations. And so we're going to be working with her, with North Country in terms of setting up some of those specific things, utilizing their existing mobile capacity to go to different locations and places to yet meet our citizens where they need to to be so that we can meet them where where they need so that we can help them get that vaccine. I'm excited to have more information about that as that's rolling out as well.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Liz. Okay, others on this? Okay, all right. So Kim, who did you say is next up? Was it Eric?
Yes, I'm actually going to transition at this point and hand it over to Eric so that he can talk about the vaccine communications campaign plan and overview and take it away, Eric.
Yeah, go ahead, Eric. At least you get a chance to talk now, just in case you don't get a chance later there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. Mr. Chairman, given the time, I'm not sure how much. We have multiple slides on the communications plan, which we can go over with individually with you today. Or if you want me to condense this ahead of Tuesday so we can get to the wrap up. And then I know we do have the legislative roundtable, so I will plan to condense unless you want me to go individually, Mr. Chair.
Well, actually, you know something, Eric, let me check in with the board members. But see, last time we cut off before we got to communications, you know, my suggestion would be that we proceed through it, you know, if you can do it a little bit rapidly, but still proceed through what you have in there. And then, you know, let us know if it's starting to bind up on it. Do I have anybody that's hesitating on that recommendation?
I think that's a great recommendation.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members. If I go to the next slide, we'll give you a campaign and communications plan overview. Obviously, this plan has already been in effect as we have gone through target audiences and communication runs, as we would say in the business, meaning different messaging and goals throughout different phases of this, of this program for vaccination, and then the channels by which we use to communicate both internal and external to the organization. So that's the overview. We'll go to the next slide and I'll follow along here. Obviously, pre-distribution, we were already in our, this is a past tense look back. Goals, key messages, target audience. I think you've all seen this as we were preparing to open for the vaccine and early in phase 1A. The next slide shows you a little bit about our channels utilized. Obviously, what we did on the website, some of our Facebook Live with Sarah Schildecker, you'll see a screen clip there. Other informations that followed both internal and external across many channels in that in that way. Going to the next phase, which is distribution to phase one, which is what we are in. And an overview of what we have, goals and key messages, again, vaccine availability drives our ability to vaccinate. So, you know, that that's a funnel equipped, we like to say, but that's a key message that the JIC team has been talking about. A lot of education. One of the things we're very lucky about here is that we don't have a demand problem for the vaccine. We certainly know there will be places that, segments of the population that will be hesitant to get the vaccine and may want to see its effect, but we have a good demand for the vaccine. So we are dealing with a supply issue when it comes to meeting that demand. You'll see a social media creative example there, vaccine update, our target audiences. One of those that I want to involve here as we go look forward to the next slide as we talk about our distribution to phase one and those channels is our hard-to-read audience. And I'm going to go right to that first, first bullet there about produced videos. We've got many different products that we're working on. We're also engaging the diversity councils to help us reach to hard-to-reach populations. If you've looked at the vast majority of what we've seen at Fort Tuthill, it's a very much a majority population, i.e. very white population that is receiving the vaccine. How do we reach hard-to-reach communities? Also included in that is a new product we're launching called In the Cocanino. That is meant to be a replacement for what we call Ask a Supervisor, Facebook Live and that kind of social media presence to engage with key staff from HHS, BOS leadership, with a couple of us being anchors. What we did find is there's very few live questions asked during those segments by people. They're not watching to ask a question. They're watching to get information. So how can we change the format to be much more of a couple of us on staff being like anchors? Going back and forth across the highlight news and notes involving key staff and leadership from HHS that are experts on the vaccine, BOS leadership about the county's plan. So we'll be rolling that out here soon, hoping later next week at the latest, possibly even this week as we ramp up this material. Obviously, press releases, critical updates, mobile sites, we'll be doing those. We have CAF Radio monthly scheduled. That includes the one that aired today with Chairman Ryan and Kim Musselman. And then we always have continued our weekly media calls. And this is an opportunity goes to our entire media list to join us on Thursdays to talk with the experts on vaccine rollout, all things COVID. Those are regularly attended by our media here in Flagstaff, but very rarely attended by others. We continue that outreach and make that available to media sources to help spread that information. Of course, there's a digital first influence as with most communications plans now, the website, social media, emails and newsletters continually being updated. And then importantly, to the internal channels, all of that being cross-posted, the Connect, which you'll see today, you should have just gotten, has information in it as well as the county manager's global weekly out to the team. And then critical issues and events that drive another global email out to the team as well. So we will have one today along with a press release from this meeting, talking about what the board did and, excuse me, did or reviewed and part of those critical updates. And then content will always be cross-posted to the county intranet for the team to take advantage of there. So we'll go to the next slide, some of the onsite activities. We call this activation in the communications world, things we do to help activate an audience and a message while we are onsite at Fort Tuthill. You'll see Sheriff Driscoll and his team being vaccinated. We've created these whiteboards for healthcare workers and others to continue to use. I got my vaccine, why? And let them write in an answer and then we can simply erase it and get it off to the next person. And we did some stories, teacher drive-along. Mr. Fisher got his COVID-19 vaccine as an educator in our community. And there was a whole series of stories very highly received on both, on all of our social media as part of that. So moving ahead, we will look at phase two and beyond, much larger target audience, much larger. All the county residents now, we're talking about priority groups, hard-to-reach populations. This is not, you have to be a member of certain groups, but we're really getting into the general population. Key messages, vaccine is safe and effective. Please continue to get your two doses. We would need to encourage people to get their second dose, remind folks that they have to do that and taking the personal responsibility to help schedule and continuing their masking and taking precautions, goals and key messages. On the next slide, we'll see some of those channels, much the same as the first. But again, wider target audiences, especially saying it's open, come and register and to get your doses, to get your vaccine appointment will be part of that. I'm going to have us move on to the next slide here as I look ahead and some of the ideas that we are thinking of to help drive both participation but also communication about the vaccines. First of all, we're looking at a COVID-19 selfie station for vaccines and the potential to to really have people amplify messages. If we do have vaccine capabilities over holidays, Memorial Day weekend, July 4th and such, adding an events and certain kind, it doesn't even need to be a holiday, it could be a weekend, could be, you know, let's all have Halloween in the middle of May type of event to help drive participation in vaccines. And then also, we are going to be looking at geo-fencing on social media to help drive people into a communication stream. What geo-fencing means is we create this idea that if you're at the Fort Tuthill site being vaccinated or if we're in Williams that day with a mobile site being vaccinated, you can put a frame on your picture. You can check in at a certain place. They're doing this at State Farm Stadium. It's very simple to do. May cost a little bit of money, but not, not a lot. But the point being is we can amplify, we're getting vaccinated. And then I wanted to point out this little box that you see, I got my vaccine. We're also considering, not just considering, but planning on some stickers that will be branded. So just like when people vote, they can show off that they have gotten their vaccine. Again, that is part of our phase two and beyond onsite activation. So there's lots in that plan. I know I went relatively quickly. I do want to point out that it's important for us to utilize both key staff, experts, you know, on the medical side of the issues and the the disease and the virus, but also our board of supervisors, leadership and other community stakeholders that the county holds to really drive those messages. Mr. Chairman, I will stop there. I know I went through the plan quickly, but I will open it up for questions and comments from the team.
All right, questions or comments from the team? Go ahead, Patrice.
Yeah, and and thanks, Eric, for this overview. And I always appreciate your wide media presence throughout the county. So thanks. Are you looking to do any more Facebook Live presentations on where we are with the vaccine?
Yes, Madam Chair, or excuse me, Madam Supervisor and Chairman Ryan. We will, yes, we will be doing a Facebook Lives. In the Cocanino, that program will be a sort of a regularly scheduled program, probably not weekly. We noticed that the weekly engagement really fell as we were doing Ask a Supervisor. You know, viewership went down week over week. And so probably bi-weekly. However, as we have critical updates and things that merit, I don't want to call it breaking news, but a feeling like that, we would, we would put in the ad hoc Facebook Live, social media updates and such on those regards.
Good. I've had quite a few people asking me, are you going to do Facebook Live? So I think that's great. I can let them know. And I like the In the Cocanino, very cute.
Others on the communication plan? This is, you know, obviously a critical piece. Go ahead, Lena.
I would suggest in your key messages, and you did touch on it at the end, was on the education part. You know, I think that we need to continue to inform people that they do need to receive their their shots. There are many that are saying they're not going to get it. And we need to make sure that we get that message out, especially to the rural communities. All of these, every event that we're talking about from testing, vaccine, all the whole program that this mission that we're just now is being presented to must look at the whole county. Must look at who is getting the shots, who are not getting them, and let's target those people. We have a very diverse community. You know, we, I know that the rural communities are really, there's still a question out there whether they're going to get their shots or not. And I think that message needs to get out and why they need their shots. That is very, very important. And the educational piece must go hand in hand with people getting their shots and all these that are, all these, these, these messages. But I think that we have to do a strong campaign as to why people need their vaccines. And and it looks like we're really looking at at making it easier for people to be able to register, to call, to be able to know where to get their shots. Right now, people are thinking they only have to go to Flagstaff. People are thinking that is where does where you get your shot. And I'm saying, no, you don't have to. You know, if you live on tribal land, you go to your nearest hospital. That's the way that the Navajo Nation and other tribes have set it up. They're not part of the county count. The other is that we're saying that we're only doing county residents. And all the messages it needs to say in there that they have to be a county resident to be able to get their shot here. I don't see that in the messages. Maybe it's already there. I just have not seen that. So I think that's really important. The other is we need to use our partners. We have all these partners, a slew of partners. They also need to send those messages out and work with them, doing that together. We have a monthly meeting with the cities and towns. We need to give them talking points so they know what's going on and they can reach their citizens. That's where they live and they'd be able to get it out into the community. So our partners who are doing the outreach, we need to help them out with the same messaging so they can send it out. And the towns and city officials, they also are there and they're ready to help. They just want to know how to help. So I think that's where the communications and I'm sure you're already doing that. But if they have a key talking points in in hand, and when they go to the radio station to do their weekly update, they'd be able to have those key talking points right there in front of them. So I would, I would add that to your, I would make that suggestion to your communication plan. You're doing a great job, you and the team. I I'm really impressed with everything that you're rolling out, but I would add that. And especially the vaccine and health. The other is that I think it'd be nice to have some pictures from outside of Flagstaff. People from outside of Flagstaff so that people can relate to them. And that way they'll know that it's so, they'll have some, maybe, maybe ask the partners to send some photos over or the cities and towns, they'd be happy to, I'm sure, provide some photos so that we can use some of those as a part of our campaign and messaging effort. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
I thought District Five already had a disproportionate number of photos in our, in all our media out there, but, but okay. Yeah, neat stuff. Actually, really good points, though, you know, just additional ways to message. And I'm not sure if Eric's going to respond, but along with that, Eric, you know, I would be curious in your response. I mean, you coordinate with different PIOs from different organizations and, you know, maybe have an explanation with that as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, yes, so I agree with all those points. There's an incredible education about virus and about the virus and the vaccine that continues on. I would add, so we do, the Northern Arizona PIO group has, we have, we continue to work with them. As Alex has come on board, Alexandra, on our team, she has taken over that role of helping to coordinate that group's work. We do meet, excuse me, I believe, monthly or quarterly. But every week we are sending, that group sends in from every agency that wishes to give information, news that we compile and then send back out to the group. So the PIOs are sharing those things. One of the things I'll ask that we'll just address, and we will certainly get it to the cities and towns meeting that we hold for the elected officials, but ask the PIOs to take the next step back then and make sure that information gets out. And that includes us, making sure our information gets to you that we hear from those other groups. So I will work on closing that loop and helping to build ambassadors and amplifiers of the message. That's really what we're, we're talking about here. We agree. We need, we need those folks who are the trusted people in their communities. Supervisor Fowler, I absolutely agree. We need folks from outside of Flagstaff to be represented in this vaccination campaign. Needs to happen. We just, and we'll ask the partners. And as we get to mobile sites, that's going to be an incredible piece of communication, not only driving people to that site to be vaccinated at that time, but also creating, I don't want to call it excitement, but a sense of hope and really an event atmosphere in our communications about the ability to be vaccinated at all of our sites. Everywhere from Fredonia to Forest Lakes, the importance of being vaccinated across this county. Everywhere from Fredonia to Forest Lakes, the importance of being vaccinated across this county.
Don't forget our partners with the public schools, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Yes, just want to, you know, they have access to the parents and messaging out to the. Through sending notes to the students and the parents, they're always, they're, you know, they're always wanting to know how, how can they help? And I think this is a great way to just have them help out, so thank you so much.
All right, very good. Looks like Supervisor Horseman, Patrice.
And just following up, up on what Supervisor Fowler just indicated. If, if you can get the information to the superintendents, they can put it on the school's website. And really that's kind of how the information is going out right now anyway, so. One other thing just to add to your list is if you can, KNAU, I know my district, District One. Has a lot of KNAU listenership. And I know they did a wonderful spot with Kim Musselman, and I posted it on my social media page. And just to try to remember to keep them in the loop. And then also, many of us Board of Supervisors have our own newsletters and also our own website. If you can get us the information, ready to just throw it into our website or into our newsletters, I, I'm sure we would do that as well, so.
Yeah, that's a, you know, I just, yeah, that's a great idea, that's, that's one way that, you know. In our district, in District Three, we're, we're reaching out to like the stores so they can post at the stores, places where. You know, people might not go to electronic, but they, if, if we, you know, we all work together, we can help foster that opportunity. Where it might not be accessible by technology as well. Just, you know, I'll wait and see if another soup pops up, but in the meantime, just one question that I have here. Eric is, and, and along with Kim, it's the. Our call center, you know, obviously our messaging always needs to be linked to our call center and, you know, just note how you, you do that would help.
So, Mr. Chairman and members, yes, so the call center continues to be active. We have expanded hours to meet the needs, obviously, once we, as we knew when we moved into Priority One B. And then with the evolution of adding sixty-five plus populations, that the call center would be more and more necessary. Regardless of the registration platform, there are just folks without internet capability, right? And so our call center exists for that. That is predominantly our number of calls that we're getting, the majority is those of an older population. Who are asking for help, or also, you know, want to, you know, try to get calls back when, when we have availability and such. So we are, we are fielding those calls, we include the call center number and it's prominently on the. Obviously, we're talking about this, it's on the website, we're including in all the press releases. It's nine two eight six seven nine seventy-three hundred. Claire Harper has done a great job at managing our capacity, we have set a goal. To, to have nearly zero, and I say nearly zero and I'll explain why, calls go to voicemail to get live answers and build capacity. There are moments when, you know, unless we, we can exactly plan how many calls we're going to get. We can't guarantee that nobody will get to a voicemail, but our goal is in any voicemails that are left, we'll go to. We'll go simply right back into a, a return call within a couple hours at the most. So no one hangs out overnight, not having a call back from our voicemails. We also are working on addressing any calls that go to the HHS front desk and other places. Getting them routed to the call center, and just for any of your constituents, it takes about twenty seconds. There's a call handler on the COVID nineteen information line, the call center. Which means they hear a recording and can press one for one option, two for option, three for other options. That has greatly helped our call volume, people are getting the information by having those options. Option four is how people get to a live person that we have staffed again, eight to seven, Monday through Friday. Eight to three Saturday and Sunday, we took calls over the holiday yesterday on Monday. Volume certainly last week is up, but still not yet at the volume of our heaviest weeks early on in the pandemic. So our messaging and other platforms about vaccine availability is reaching people. We know that, we know word of mouth that's reaching people. You know, person A talks to person B and that helps us see a reduced capacity because correct information is being passed on. Chairman Ryan, I'm happy to answer any other questions about the call center you may have.
Okay, no, at this, not, not for me on that. Any others from the supervisors, you know, we have one more piece that we're going to move on to. And I'm not seeing others bubble up at this point. Okay, so next we'll move into the next critical decisions, Jimmy's going to hop up next.
Thank you Chair Ryan and members, I want to say thank you to Kim and the entire team. For the work that you, you have been doing, are doing and will be doing moving forward. I want to go back just briefly to Supervisor Archuleta's earlier question regarding volunteers. About two weeks ago, I did have a brief conversation with Carol. And I know that Kim is, I wanted to let you all know that Kim is scheduled to meet with Carol tomorrow at three o'clock. United Way obviously has been a, a solid partner of not only this organization, but this community and this county. Across our county and, so thank you, Kim, for, for connecting with, with United Way. And thank you Supervisor Archuleta, for reminding us of that. Chair Ryan, if I could just go into, I'm on the, here the last slide. So it was, I referenced it earlier in my opening comments that we are having. The team is having some meetings over the next couple days. And we will be prepared to bring you a recommendation at the next board meeting with the next scheduled update on January twenty-sixth. For the leadership structure moving forward in this new season that we find ourselves. But leveraging the entire team in our one county response. So through, through a lot of information at you, we will, I've committed to you and the team is committed to. To provide additional information on a regular basis, we're going to be look, looking at, you know, the format of that. Along with the, the leadership structure, but also the format of how we're, how we're sharing information with you. And I would, I would welcome any comments that you all have and suggestions, especially as we're preparing for that January twenty-sixth meeting. That if you have specific issues that you feel like we did not cover today, or that you had some other questions. Please shoot them my way, and I will make sure that we get those issues and or questions addressed. By the team, especially in preparation for the twenty-sixth. So EM came forward today and EM Director Wes Deason. In the space of surging as, serving as logistics chief as part of this incident command response. So we will be coming back with some additional details regarding the staffing and the physical resources that you, you heard about today. And as soon as Wes hears anything, we will make sure the board is kept up to date as he's hearing back. From all of the inquiries that he has made, Mike Oxby was referenced as well regarding his partnership as a chief, chief health officer. For the county, so we will be potentially having some additional action items for you for several things on the twenty-sixth. And then obviously moving forward as this develops, we will have some additional potential things for you to. We need your, your voice and your counsel as, as the policymakers for this organization. But we also may be asking for, for some additional access to the checkbook. Both Kim and, and Director Fowler did discuss the IT. You know, solutions moving forward that is likely going to require some additional resources. And so we will have an update for you on IT, we have heard very clearly, Chair Ryan and members. About, you know, the, the functionality or lack of, of our current system. And the team is putting their shoulder in and has been for, for a period of time, looking at the right solution. That we feel would best meet the needs to bring a recommendation to the board, to say, here's what this looks like and feels like. And we feel that this is a, a doable, a viable solution to serve the residents that are expecting. That professional service and ease of, of scheduling specifically in relation to the IT space. Again, we'll continue to, to work with partners that they were talked about a lot today, that is underway, has been, and will continue to be. To develop, so it's like, you know, Supervisor, you know, Horseman has talked about before, you build it, they will come, or it will come, in this case. You know, getting the volunteer base in place so that we are prepared, and I think that's the key. At least for, for the, for the team and I right now and the board, then we've heard clearly that we need to be prepared for. Especially because there's so many variables in the mix right now, we don't know what the states and the feds are going to come through. Not only in the, in the physical resource category, but in the staffing category. So how do we make sure that we are putting our full attention into, into mobilizing our partners? And continuing to partner with them and, and work with them so that we have the capacity that we need to be successful with this mission. This is not, there is not an option here, we have got to succeed. The public health is part of the space that we operate in, and this county has been a leader in that space, and we take that very seriously. Lastly, Chair Ryan, you know, the, the advocacy is something that the board has talked about, it was mentioned again by several of you today. But we will make sure that in this space, and as we're developing these plans moving forward. Part of this, in my opinion, is making sure that we are staying connected with the board. In making sure that we're providing you sufficient information in a timely manner. The team has done a great job with that, but we're, we're even going to, we are stepping that up. And part of that is then what is our ask of you as these come forward in the advocacy space? Lastly, I wanted to just clarify on security and go back to that, and thank you Director Deason for, for your presentation on the security plan. We believe at a staff level and that that is necessary, especially when we bring these state or federal assets in. That are valuable, so there's two things, one, we don't want, we want to protect the asset, and two, we also want the asset. To be able to continue to deliver service to people. We can replace the asset, but that takes time, we want to keep putting shots in arms. So we believe and, and will plan for, we will provide updates to the board. That we will be likely moving forward with a security plan when those assets are deployed and in conjunction with that. So Chair Ryan and members, I just want to say thank you for your perspectives, your questions, your comments. Please know that staff welcomes those, I would, I would ask that you continue to funnel them to me. And please, and we will make sure that we incorporate those. Because the product that we produce for you and for the public that you, that we serve. I want to make sure it has the most value, the team wants to make sure that it does. So again, I want to say thank you to the board and the team and the entire organization. And the public who is engaged in this vital public health response.
Okay, looks like Liz bubbled up, so. Before you do Liz, just, just a point Jimmy was just making, if, if we could as board members funnel them to Jimmy. It, it'll help while staff is in the middle of trying to mobilize and coordinate. Sometimes it starts to get confusing on. You know, they might perceive directives rather than, you know, what, what is going on. So the more we work together with Jimmy and Jimmy facilitating, that'll help out quite a bit. But it's, it's an element that we, we just want to keep, be conscious of and, and try and help them in that way. Go ahead Supervisor Archuleta, Liz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I just want to go back to the communications just for a bit. And I'm sorry, stepped out just for a second, so I may have missed a little bit of this. But, you know, when we first had the, the, the COVID and we started experiencing COVID in our community, we used a number of different. Mechanisms to communicate, and I'm thinking that now that the vaccine is here. It might be good to use some of those same, some same types of communications. So for example, you know, could we develop like a messages and public service announcements? And ask Northern Arizona University to put it on their channels when they're not programming or in between their programming. If any of, any of the cities within the county that have their own internal, you know, like TVs in their lobbies. Where they send out messages if that could be utilized as well. Internal communications to like cities, all the cities within the county and towns to their employee groups. Or maybe in their newsletters to their employees would be great. Or, and city, cities and towns within Hocneo County and their print publications would be great.
Liz, can I hop on that one for half a second? Yeah, I, you know, an example would be down in Sedona, a lot of the hotels have a rotating piece, but you know, just add to that.
Yeah, exactly, chambers of commerce who have newsletters that go out either print or via email. So all of those external partners, you know, tapping into them. And, and employee groups, employers that have, that employ large numbers of people, so, you know. Manufacturing, I mean, I'm coming to mind like, you know, Purina, obviously, you know, Gore is one of our potential partners. But, you know, getting information out to their employees through their human resource channels or, or their information. Department, and then I was thinking about buses, the NAPDA buses. Those are obviously billboards on wheels that go around and, you know, have those, have that type of information that you can put on. The buses and so that would be great. And then I think I missed the part where the board members, I mean, I saw the graphics about. Like the sheriff, law enforcement and medical folks where they're, you know, were utilizing like I got my shot. You know, get yours or whatever, that type of, type of campaign. What is the plan for board members, I see that the diversity councils have been engaged, I see the plan for board members is to maybe do some rotating. Radio type thing, but are we utilizing board members, once board members get their shots in their appropriate category, are we utilizing board members as well?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, super, and then lastly, I would like to see us explore an education video on the vaccine. I will be sending one this afternoon from a doctor in California that does a very short educational video. On the vaccine, on the various types of vaccine or the companies, the various companies that produce the vaccine. Talks about like what to expect, talks about how effective they are, which they're all equally effective. But it's a really good little education video and one of the things, and this is more. Not only for public information, but also we talked about prior to people registering for, and I don't want to let this go. Registering for a vaccine that they be, they be. Asked to watch, and it's more than asked, that they would not be able to actually sign up for a vaccine until they watch an educational video. About what to expect, what to, what the, what to, what to expect, not only from the. Answers like those basic questions about the vaccine, but also what to expect when you go get your shot. And what that will do is it then decreases the number, the questions that people have when they get to the site. That then slows down the like productivity per hour for shots. And I know that we'll have medical folks that we can move them into another line for people to ask medical questions, but it might even help eliminate some of that. Even, you know, even further if people watch an educational video on the vaccine. So that's, I would like to have some consideration of that and would like, I mean, that would be like for next week, I'd love to get some. I guess some input on how that can be done and. You know, if the team sees value in that. So yeah, to explore that further. Thank you.
You're muted, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, hey, one more thing, I'm sorry, did I get to this, I'm sorry, make it to my other communication, I have one more, I'm sorry, one more page that I had a few notes on. So, and then just internally, so I, I think the, like, so the internal communications with our one thousand plus employees. I mean, I see, I see that like the County Manager Global, the press releases, the Chronicle and the Connect. But are we going to do like maybe a campaign for people also within our organization that's like, hey, I got. You know, I got mine, go get yours, maybe some testimonials for internal and then like, so then they can also help push that out, you know, externally too. I think, you know, we have, we have one thousand, over one thousand ambassadors within our own organization. I think, you know, we have, we have 1,000 over 1,000 ambassadors within our own organization. And so how do we effectively use the 1,000 ambassadors to then go and speak to five more people? Or 10 people of their family and friends, which then we've now reached 10,000 people. So I'd like for a little bit of thought put into that for next week and then let me know. Let you can let us know how we can effectively utilize our 1,000 county ambassadors. Okay, gone through my notes now. Thanks.
All right, and I'm I'm muted at this point. So look like Supervisor Horstman, Patrice?
And I think those are excellent ideas Supervisor Archuleta. And I'm also looking forward to hearing a little bit more about the use of the website. I know and I pass them on to Kim and others, just folks complaining about Eventbrite. And I know it was a quick rollout. We needed to get shops in people's arms and that's our number one priority. But I'm anxious to hear more about the the new up up and coming registration website. So I look forward to that too at our next meeting. And if I can, I'd like to also just kind of point out with the obvious, and that's why we're doing this. And I'd like to acknowledge the memory of Alta Edison and the over 230 people who have died. And tens of thousands of people in this county. And you know, that's why we're doing this. And quite frankly, how we accomplish this is going to absolutely define. Every member of this Board of Supervisors and every person working for Coconino County. That's another reason why we're doing this. We can't let our county down. This is too important. And I also just want to quote from our soon to be president tomorrow. You know, Biden, you know, has a very, obviously. Is expecting to do 100 million vaccines within the first 100 days. He said he's going to manage the hell out of it. And Coconino County is also needs to get ready to manage the hell out of this as well. So I want to thank everybody for all of your efforts. I know these are long hours, long days. Sticking away from your families, your spouses, and I just want to thank you for all of your hard work. And we have to get this done. You know, failure is not an option here. So we need to get this done. So I want to thank you all and the other members of the Board of Supervisors for your leadership. County Manager, the DCMs, the Kim, you rock. And all of you for all the hard work you're doing on this. So thank you so much.
All right, others. It looks like Supervisor Fowler, Lena?
Yes, thank you. I thank you for, I, this is such an important session that we are having. We have to be completely organized to be able to deliver. Such an important service where we can actually save lives. I live near Tuba City Hospital in in Tuba City. And every day I I listen to the helicopters come and go. And it's very heart, it's heartbreaking because you know what what is going on. And we have loved ones that we have lost and so we have to. And our stories are the same as this, our citizens' stories. Our residents that live in Coconino County that we are working on behalf of. And I'm really happy that we're going into the next phase. Where we will be able to address some of the issues that have not been addressed. And the communication and the just the collective effort by the board and as well as the management. And all of the teams throughout our whole county system really have to be organized. And yes, we have to keep up with the new administration that has very aggressive plans. And I'm really happy that this plan is being put in place. And again, I say that, you know, we have to really look at our rural communities. I would think that the mobile units that may be brought in may also be used out in the rural communities. Where people are not able to reach, like the Marble Canyon area. You know, Marble Canyon is a small, small little place and up and down. There are people that are going to have to be neat vaccinations. I don't know how we're going to do the vaccines in the mobile unit. I guess we'll have freezers in them because that's that is the key to these vaccines. And again, I believe the education is very educating people about the importance of their health. Their loved ones is very important. And part of and the most important right now is to get a vaccine. If you're in that category, the other thing too is what category are we all in? You know, some people have said, well, you already got your shot. And say, no, just because you're an elected official doesn't mean you already have your shot. You know, I'm probably in the phase two or three. And so I'll be lucky if I get my shot in May. So we all have to make sure that education is out there that we are, we have, there's a reason for these. Phases that we're going through. We have to take care of our elderly. We have to take care of the people that really are close to the children. And just just yesterday, or was it today? One of the news said that there's in Arizona, there is an increase in children. Getting vaccines 4,000%. That is a lot and we have to be really concerned about that. And this this virus, from what we're hearing, is that it will be with you for the rest of your life in some way or another. So we have to take care of ourselves, continue to provide education that that is the most simplest. Wear your mask, double mask, wash your hands, sanitize your hands. And do the same for everyone and stay isolated. That is what we have to continue to do as well as also making sure that we still continue to advertise the testing sites. Those testing sites are very important. And so that's how people find out that they they need to isolate themselves. And that is an education in itself. So I just want to thank all of you for everything that you're doing. And you know, Matt, Matt Fowler, the IT department has been just amazing. From the time that we hit this, the pandemic happened. To being able to work from home, making sure that all the employees are able to. Do what they need to do from home and be able to now help with the health department. And re redoing the website just is just amazing. The skill that the county has, the staff has, just the expertise that is right here. I'm very impressed with our our with our team and I think that you're all doing a great job. I just want to thank all of you and I know our communities are very thankful. But you know, the confusion will will be less, it will go away. If we just provide the information more. So the communication plan is is very important. It's really good. And just the input that we provided. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you Supervisor Fowler. We have Supervisor Begay up there and we'll we'll wrap this up in a few after Supervisor Begay. And and then talk a little bit about what we have afterwards as well. Supervisor Begay, Judy? I saw you up there wanting to speak. Okay, if Supervisor Begay comes in, we'll we'll provide that opportunity. So just one swing back to next critical decisions where you were Jimmy. Just a piece I was hoping you would have started introducing us to. The hop over to Lucendo on this one as well would be the the budget element. You know, we need to identify our source of funding. And then the implications associated with that as we take a look at. We definitely want to invest in this mobilization. Obviously, we want to retrieve as much as we can. But it it is begging for additional resources and so identifying that. And and knowing we have the capability is a key piece that we've always done and and want to be aware of. The just a couple of comments on my side would be, you know, fantastic job from everybody. There's a lot going on. Obviously, you know, as Kim says, variables, you know. How can you define it with all these variables? I think you all did a really good job of presenting what what we're seeing. And the mobilization has got many parts associated with it with many unknowns. So having the, I I guess I cut Essler off. He can get back at me later on. But the modeling capability, really excited about that. These units, hopefully we can get them. We we always want to manage our expectations on what we have out there. But we're trying for what we can and trying to get the right pieces together. I think one of you, I think it was Lena, but we're talking mostly vaccines. But a piece that slipped in there, which is really critical pieces. That you're moving forward with transitioning the testing site. And having that testing available still for the community, we'll be working together with the. Coconino Community College CCC, a partner that's stepping up. We we really want to thank them for what they're doing. But for the sake of our community members and individuals, knowing the testing is still available. Always a concern if you're, you think you have it and or maybe, well, you definitely want to use the testing capability. That helps us also protect the community. If you know you have it, you know, you want to. Take those additional measures to try and stay away from people from exposing them. So with that, I haven't seen Supervisor Begay pop up again. But that, I believe Jimmy, is our conclusion associated with this or any final comments there?
Thank you, Chair Ryan. Truly appreciate the perspectives, the input, the feedback. It is very helpful and we will take all of that into account. And everything that you have also just shared in preparation in our discussions the next couple of days and in preparations for. The 26th. But in the meantime, I reiterate, if you have questions, comments, observations, things that you want to make sure are being addressed. You don't feel like, you know, we're doing something or we should, you know, we should be doing something, whatever it is. Please let me know and I will make sure to to share that with the team. Just say great job to the team. Thanks again.
Well, and I'll get Supervisor Archuleta in just a second. But my gosh, we have people that are working really hard out there throughout the organization as well as the community. But we, you know, obviously want to keep that in the back of our mind. We we want to consider their capacity, very important. But we know for the sake of everyone working out there and not only in the health area, but throughout the county. We really appreciate all the work that's being done, yeoman's task by many people on it. We understand exhaustion comes about with this, but you're working hard on behalf of the community. We certainly appreciate that. Supervisor Archuleta?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman Jimmy. So can you just outline a little bit for next week? What the expectation is for next week? I think that would be really good to to understand that in terms of board decision. And so, yes, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Chair Ryan, Supervisor Archuleta. First and foremost, we'll be bringing you the recommended leadership structure as we have discussed. And then we will be bringing you an update. We are working on kind of a model of what that update will look like. As far as the information and it'll include factors that that we already know and that you have shared with us. So you will be getting an update of that that we will do, largely speaking, moving forward. Once a week with the board in in person, I mean, in this format. But we will also be sending you updates in between as well as as they are appropriate. To make sure that you are in the loop. We may have some decision points specifically next week. Right now, I can't tell you what those will be. But what we will do, Supervisor Archuleta, in response to Supervisor Ryan's question. Is we can take the the financial information that was prepared and we can further that. And Chair Ryan, you and I can can talk some more about that to make sure that we are providing the budget information that you are requesting. Again, understanding some stuff has been donated. We've got some quotes right now, the team has. But we will make sure that we share that as specifically as we can. Bottom line, there may be some action items that we are looking for that we will develop over the next two days.
And and also to add to that, we've we've talked about it. Because we're in an emergency, sometimes we'll get last minute information. But there's an intent to to make sure that we get our information ahead of time. Can't always do, but definitely everybody's working on that. So I have Supervisor Fowler.
Add that Supervisor Begay just texted back and said that she had dropped off, she lost her call just as she was starting to speak. But she just wanted to thank everyone and appreciate all of all of, you know, manager and the staff. All they continue to address an issue that we all share. Please thank them.
All right, very good. Appreciate it. Thank you, Judy and.
Chair Ryan, if I could just clarify regarding, you know, we talked about, you know, the Board of Supervisors is the policy group. And and we we've talked about meeting, you know, and providing you regular. But we will schedule other regular, you know, special meetings as needed, as as things arise. To make sure that there is a, you know, a solid connection and that you all as policymakers are involved in helping us on this path forward. Thank you, Chair Ryan.
All right, and I have Supervisor Fowler and then Supervisor Horstman. Nope, okay.
I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm good. Thank you. I just, thank you, everyone.
Okay, now we were supposed to, we're an hour past our, I said it jokingly, but I we. We always crimp Eric down. And so I'm I'm checking in to see if the board members are willing to stay a little bit longer. We were intended to go to 5 o'clock, but we haven't had any of our legislative piece presented to us here. You guys good with that? Okay.
I can stand.
All right, okay. See, you get to use your tie. You kept your tie on. All right, Eric. Let's see what you have for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. We did distribute the roundtable packet to you all. So I am not, in the interest of time today, I will go through the issues that need to be addressed. There there's a lot of information in the packet, but I just wanted to highlight these things for Supervisor Horstman, Supervisor Begay. So you're familiar during the legislative session, we will continue roundtables. And also to get the county position on legislative items that we haven't previously discussed to bring you updates. But then also I just wanted to let you know, I think you probably, you may not have gotten an email yet. But we now have, CSA has created your request to speak legislative tracking position. Through the Arizona Legislature, we, in the past, Public Affairs has helped maintain those accounts for the supervisors. And essentially what that is, is when you direct us or on county bills that need the county related bills that need supervisors to. Give an up arrow or a down arrow or a thumbs up or a thumbs down, as we say in the legislature, to bills. You can let us in Public Affairs know and we will register your name. So by way of an example, last session, the bill on short term rentals that we pushed, the commercial property tax parity. When that bill came up for hearing, we brought it to roundtable. The the board said, yes, we should to support this. Obviously, it's our bill. And then the county Public Affairs would register you in opposition or support. You can do that individually on bills as well outside of the county position. So we'll connect with each of you. I just want you to know that that's there and that bills are starting to be heard. Obviously, today and other places, there is a lot of things going on in the legislature. I'll just report today. Because of security concerns related with the inauguration. The members of the House were not able to meet. The entire Democratic Caucus boycotted the House session today because of security. And there was only 28 members of the House available and so the House could not meet. And there was only 28 members of the House available, and so the House could not meet to do actions, including first readings. Because only Republicans and not enough of them showed up to to maintain a quorum for a majority of the House. So we are in a different legislative session than normal. The Senate, despite the entire Democratic Caucus not appearing along with Mr. Shulp, was able to meet today and conduct business. So that affects a little bit of the calendar.
Hey Eric, let me, let me pause. I want to go back just a half a second on that. So, you know, just adding to it, the legislative cycle. We all, we all, all the supervisors belong to County Supervisors Association. And normal year, we would, you know, you'd have the option of traveling down that they meet at least once a month. That they get together. And then we have the. We also are members of the medium county caucus and all supervisors are on that as well. You'll see, you know, legislatures put through thousands of bills. Fortunately, we have County Supervisors Association, as you saw on an earlier presentation that Eric provided. That help us, you know, we have experienced people, but we all work together. We attempt to. Not only in the County Supervisors Organization, but also trying to do so as a board. Trying to strengthen our position. You know, we have legislative staff that we coordinate with and then along with that. You know, one of the pieces that I've been doing on behalf of the board that you've again designated me for would be. I'm a Legislative Policy Committee member and we, because legislation happens so quickly. We need to be able to respond on the LPC, which we call it. I'm attempting to, if we can capture the position ahead of time, trying to stay consistent with what our positions are with the county. So that's another conduit, but where Eric mentioned that we, that every, each supervisor is registered and they assist with that. It's usually, we have the potential to unify and there are some consultation that we'll attempt to do. There, you might decide you take a different position. If you do, usually. We'll ask, depending upon the circumstance, that you state that it's not a position. Of the county that you're taking an independent position of the county if we've established positions associated with it. But we'll go through a whole, you'll get comfortable with it. Okay, go ahead Eric. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have a couple of things that we do need to address and I've asked Jay Smith, our Forest Restoration Director, to join us. We've got some bills which are in your packet, two bills, companion bills 2247 and 1177. Which are Forest Products Tax Credits in relation to Forest Restoration Efforts. And then also there are two bills, 2248 and 1175 relating to the Corporation Commission. Madam Chair and, excuse me, Mr. Chair and Supervisors, get used to this. We do recommend that for 2247 and 1177, they are bills being run by SRP, the Salt River Project. In support of Forest Products Industry, not necessarily loggers. But they are tools in the toolbox, a tax credit program that could help to help jumpstart the Forest Restoration and Efforts and Forest Industry. Recommending a support position. And I'll pause for questions in a minute. The other two, 2248 and 1175 are bills being run that would prevent the Corporation Commission. From taking any action to allow biomass or require biomass or renewable energy. So essentially, the legislature is saying Corporation Commission in these bills, you cannot be a part of acting on behalf of the. Acting to require these renewables, including biomass, which is a position of the county. We would oppose these bills based on our position of support that we've had for the biomass function. So I wanted to bring those two sets of bills to you, get the direction of the board. Again, supporting the Forest Products Tax Credit 2247 and 1177, opposing Corporation Commission 2248 and 1175.
And so, and a piece of your, your presentation, Eric, is. You know, you've run it through Jay Smith, who's our forester. I always mess up Jay's title, but Jay helps with this. And we're trying to stay on the proactive side of enhancing our opportunity. Oh, Jay, you're here too. Okay. And then the corporation positions, again, you know, Corporation Commission, this is their bellywake. It is an opportunity to foster. The. The bio industry and beyond. But Jay, did you want to make a comment or two on this? Are you here to answer questions?
Yeah, thank you Chair Ryan. For the ACC, I mean, it's been obvious that they've been putting off making that decision to mandate biomass energy and. And this legislation, they've always been saying we need to do it legislatively, or that's one option, one way to do it. And this bill would pretty much force it that way. So it would kind of take the onus off of ACC. To make that decision, it would have to go through legislation to to mandate or force biomass energy in the state of Arizona. The tax credit that Eric mentioned, I mean, obviously, it's, I did the math and it could save, you know, $14 to $15. Per acre. Or reduce it by that much through the tax credit per, but it only goes to the, those industries that process. Logs into lumber or some sort of firewood or other product. So biomass energy would fit under that as well. But it would not, would not trickle all the way down to the logger unless, unless the industry did that themselves.
All right. And so, repeat the recommendations, Eric.
Yep. So I would recommend the board support 2247 and 1177, the Forest Products Tax Credits Bills. And oppose 2248 and 1175, the bills limiting the Corporation Commission's renewable energy resource power.
And these are pretty consistent with our direction, but, you know, I paused for a minute to see if any members. Are you, usually we see each other. Actually, could I ask the board members if you can to just get up on video just so. You know, maybe we give a head nod or something like that. Are we okay with this recommendation or are there any questions on this?
I would accept Eric's recommendation. I agree.
Okay. I'm not hearing any opposition either. All right.
I agree.
All right. Okay, go ahead Eric.
Thank you, members. The other two bills that we just need to quickly address are 2025 and 2306 up under the property tax legislation. CSA has taken a position opposed, but I want to make sure to get the county's position. 2025 was a bill from last year and what it was run by then Treasurer Royce Flora. From Maricopa County alone, independent of the Maricopa Board or other treasurers. That removes your power as the Board of Supervisors to waive interest on delinquent property taxes. The treasurers are opposed to this as well. This was Mr. Flora's bill alone. It is back now. Mr. Kavanaugh's bill. See, I would recommend that I fully expect this bill to be amended to allow, to keep the Board of Supervisors in the business of waiving interest if we're going to waive it. However, in its form that it's written, I believe we should oppose it because it removes your power, which is consistent with the county board's position to not. Give up any authority. Quickly before we move on to that bill, 2306 is the bill from the Pacific Legal Foundation. That, in my opinion, and in the opinion of the treasurer, who couldn't be with us today, radically changes how. The foreclosure process goes in Arizona. This is a group that is going across the country, fighting that governments essentially perform an illegal taking of equity through foreclosure processes. And are trying to change the foreclosure processes. In fact, CSA, ACO, the treasurer. My team was meeting today at four to go over some of the potentials and this includes a treasure Benatar is a property tax deferral. As an alternative to this, but we, I do recommend we oppose that bill 2306 and you have it in your packet as well. CSA is opposing both. This would be to put our county in line with CSA to oppose both.
Yeah, and I'm seeing head nods. Anybody opposed to this? Looks like everybody's in agreement here. Yeah, so we'll take those positions. All right, Eric.
Mr. Chairman, the rest of the report can be information. We can deal with it next Tuesday. We'll bring important things. I do want to highlight. What I sent and I'll just switch my screen here really quick and get up to the, sorry. Let me get back here. ADHS, the Regional Advisory Committee for ADHS, excuse me, Arizona Department of Homeland Security. Mr. Parks sat on this committee for us in the past. I believe you all should be able to see this. It's in your packet as well. This is Navajo, Apache and Coconino Counties are in the Regional Advisory Committee for Arizona Department of Homeland Security. We have the opportunity to nominate a member of the Board of Supervisors for that seat. It does affect how some funding goes, much like the RAC does for the Forest Service and such. The governor makes the appointment, but I would be looking for a member of the board if they are willing to serve on this. So that the board could nominate them to the governor and we would create a letter of that nomination. So this is in your packet. I think you should be able to see my screen, but I wanted to bring this forward to you. See if any members were interested so that we could maintain representation.
I was going to ask if anybody's interested. I already got a cue from Lena that it sounds like she's interested, but. Does anybody else want to wrestle Lena for a governor's appointment for giving money out here?
Are you selling it?
Are you, so are you serious Lena? Would you like to do this and and check in with the board member? Let's check in with the board members also on this.
If the board would, I would. So if the board agrees.
Okay, are you guys okay with it? I see a thumbs up from Patrice. I can't see the other members with my.
That would be great. Thank you.
All right, fantastic Lena. Okay, I want you to bring all the money back to Coconino County, especially District Three. And if you do, we'll write a nice letter of recommendation for you.
Only if you pay me.
I can't.
This is a public meeting.
That's right, I can't. Yeah, so.
No, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, no, it'd be really good. Go ahead Eric.
Well, I was, I was just going to finish my report, so I didn't mean no question.
Okay, please. Go ahead.
We will come back to things that are important, recognizing time. There is a state budget report, so you can see what the governor put in on state budget items. We have a major couple wins on broadband and expansion of the rural broadband grant program to 10 million. And then the governor is asking to, the legislature to approve money to fund broadband internet from Flagstaff west to the California border. At about 33 million, so building the conduit in on 40. 540 east would again be dependent on federal funds. And there's a lot on the federal side we could discuss. I was planning next Tuesday to have some conversation about federal priorities. And build that into the roundtable ahead of potential meetings in middle February with our delegation.
So on that one, you know, Eric could let me know about this one and, you know, a thought I had for it is trying to suggest that. Sometimes they just go with the interstate itself and if it were the city of Flagstaff boundaries, then that would. Link 89A, which is the corridor that we're, we've been working on. You know, it would be an important link. It'd be a shame to have a gap between I-17 and 89A. On that, and I thought, you know, it might be good if we just pushed, you know, put together a letter and pushed our position and maybe. Suggest that the city of Flagstaff did that as well. Lena, it might be good from an 89A, all the work that we've done from that perspective to go ahead and do that. Would you, that okay with everybody? We give direction to Eric to go ahead and do that. I'm seeing head nods. Okay.
That is a great opportunity. And I will add that, you know, I know Eric and has already seen this, but. With the new, with this package that just went through Congress, there's a great opportunity for partnership. Because tribes have received quite a bit of money as well for broadband. As you all know, we, we did the feasibility study. From, from Flagstaff to Utah and then all the way to Four Corners. So I believe there's a great partnership there. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Eric?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, no, we will again have some state update and some federal update for the 26th. Well, anytime you have a question about any of the reports we send you, feel free to ask me. I'm happy to go over what they mean, but we. We give you lots of information, not intending to go through every bit of it, but if there are things that are a question or you want to talk about, feel free and we'll bring them up.
Patrice will read it for us. She's good at that. The, so anything else that we have for the good here? Jimmy, any final comments here?
Chair Ryan, members, thanks again for your time today and we will be in touch with you all. And look forward to our conversation, our next regularly scheduled conversation on Tuesday.
All right. All right. And we're not posted for roundtables, so we got to stop at this point, guys, on that. You could save it up for next time and then we'll, Eric, you got to keep wearing a tie. We'll make sure that you.
The legislature is in session. I'll be in a tie all spring.
All right. Hey, I want to thank everybody. Let's say that again, Liz.
Don't forget to light a candle today and put it in your window, either a candle or a, you know, like a little battery operated. Light.
Explain that for people that are listening. Oh, yes.
Oh, sure. Well, I'd love to. Coconino County is participating along with the. With President-elect Biden and Vice President-elect Harris, where tonight the National Mall in DC is, is actually. This entire perimeter has lights around it and it's being lit for the first time actually in, in Washington DC and it's to. To basically remember and honor those who have lost their lives to COVID. And so they're asked. County, Coconino County to participate in that and other cities and counties throughout the nation and by lighting up. Buildings and by asking residents to put a light in their window. And so we will have some of our buildings that will be lit up. You will see that. Our 110 building downtown, our King Street Building will have some, some lights and. Oh, I'm missing one other building. Is it the courthouse, Eric?
The courthouse, the courthouse.
Yeah, courthouse. And so that will be, that will be, that will be our way of remembering those who have lost their lives. And so us as individual residents can do the same and that is by putting a candle or a light in one of our windows. So really encourage you to do that and to just take a little bit of time to reflect on those who have lost their lives.
All right. Very good. Yeah, yeah, really good. And we're putting a newsletter out related to it with Liz commenting on that one as well. Our newsletter, news release. The, yeah, so don't, don't forget to shovel your driveways now and get ahead of this snow that's coming in here. Been in meetings all day. I'm going to go run a snow blower. Well, I want to thank everybody, staff, a lot of hard work. People are getting tired, but you guys put a. Really good piece together. It's continuing to, you know, come together. We really appreciate that. Understanding the importance of this and then for the sake of the board, you know, really good stuff. I think we, you know, it's materializing well. Don't hesitate, you know, if you have questions or anything, you know, either we reach out to one another. You know, respecting open meeting law or obviously reaching out to Jimmy. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting and wish everybody a good night. Look forward to tomorrow. All right.
One, great job.
Good job, yes.